Everyone. Today is Thursday, August 6th, and it's my privilege to call to order the Westwood School Committee meeting. We are actually meeting today from Room 113 of Westwood High School. So it's nice to see everybody face to face this evening. To start though, Charlie is out of state, so we want to make sure we have you on board with us, Charlie. Excellent. And so we're going to do a roll call attendance. So let's start with Charlie. Charlie Donahue? I think you're on mute.
Hello?
There you are. There's a delay. Okay. Maia? Here. Tony?
Here.
Amanda? Here. Excellent. And I am Carol Lewis, and we are all here together. Before we get started with this meeting, I want everyone to realize that this is a live broadcast and on-stream available through Westwood Media Center. And this is also available online at westwood.k12.ma.us/live. This meeting is coming through real-time, public access to the activities of the school committee, are following the law in accordance with the March 12, 2020 Executive Order of Governor Baker. So welcome, everyone. We will get started with the school committee chair update and liaison report. I'm going to turn the floor right over to Maia because I think that's our one liaison report unless others have something to contribute. But we'll start with the building project update.
Great, thanks Carol. So we had a meeting this past week with the MFCA. It was a facility assessment meeting where they looked at our plans, they provided feedback, and it went very well. We had a great meeting. They really liked our plan. They had some questions, but I think we were able to answer. And so the next step is the August MFCA Board Meeting where they will hopefully vote to approve the option seven, which was the final option that the FDC recommended. And once they do that, we are officially in the schematic design phase. In the schematic design phase, we will be really digging into that design, that final design with finishes and tas啊s and interiors and finally cost estimates. We are hoping to have two community forums in the fall. We don't have those dates yet finalized, but we will be announcing those. But that's a chance to really look at the design as it progresses and provide your feedback. As always, we are very interested in the resident feedback. And hopefully, we're all moving towards the spring town meeting where we will look for a vote on this project. So that's where we are.
Fantastic. Does anyone else have anything in terms of liaison? Okay, well, that's fine because really not a whole lot goes on during the summer, so and we have our liaison assignments, which we'll talk about later on. So from there, we're going to move on to discussion items.
Sure person, we want to talk about public participation, the timing.
Well, sure, that's a good idea. Public participation will follow the discussion item, of which there is one, which is, of course, the fall reopening plan. I know we have a lot of folks out there, many of whom probably have never been to a school committee meeting. Right before public participation, I'll talk to you all about how public participation works. But folks should understand that there are two means of getting through to public participation, whether it's through Zoom and I have, just make sure that I have it right, but I'm going to give the full detail of how folks can get in, but you can start now if you'd like. You have opportunity to write in or opportunity to join us via Zoom. Let's see. Why don't I, can I get into the details after?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, why don't we do that? Because there still will be time. We will be, we will have plenty of time for public participation, so I don't want folks to be concerned that they don't have the experience.
Right, thank you.
Okay? All right. So we're going to move to our discussion item, which is the fall reopening plan. Before we get to that, I really want to just take this opportunity on behalf of the school committee to thank the folks. And when I talk about folks, I'm talking about central office, Emily and her team, the teachers, all of the faculty who have spent countless hours trying to decide, trying to figure out what is the best way to reopen in the fall. It is an extremely difficult decision. We are facing times that we have never faced before. I want to thank the parents and other Westwood residents who don't even have children in school who are so, who care so much about academic excellence in this community. And we appreciate all the calls, the emails, folks have participated in our quote-unquote coffees with the principals. We've received texts and so on and so forth. People are extremely passionate about this subject, of course, because our children are our most precious commodity, and it's so important that we maintain academic excellence to the best of our ability in these turbulent times. In truth, we would all love to go back a year and have what we had before, but that's just not reality right now, and we have to make some very difficult decisions as the school committee, working with the administration and our faculty, to ensure that we uphold our promise for academic excellence in the best way possible in these trying times. So with that, I'm going to turn the floor over to Emily Park, and we're going to talk about the fall reopening plan.
Great. All right, thank you Carol.
Sure.
So at our last school committee meeting, which was just a couple of weeks back, I think, at this point, I spent quite a bit of time at that meeting framing how we had arrived at this moment, and specifically reviewing how things have unfolded over the spring and into the summer at the state level. You might recall that at that meeting, I also reflected on some of the lessons that we learned this summer since we opened up our ESY program for students for in-person instruction. And, you know, we talked at the last meeting about some of the successes that we noticed in that program, some of the challenges that we have encountered, and I really shared with you some of my thoughts just about capacity. So the capacity both of the district to implement certain things and also the capacity of the system, you know, I don't mean the school system, but sort of the system writ large, that's necessary to support the work of the district as we think about reopening. So I won't rehash all of that tonight, but I just wanted to sort of remind you of that because I think that's really important to understanding what we're talking about tonight. I also noted at that time that I was hearing from a lot of people with very differing viewpoints, and I presented some preliminary models, some potential models that we were thinking about that were sort of taking shape in our working groups, and shared those with you. So since that meeting, our working groups continued and have concluded their work and their process, and we have arrived at some decisions through that process. In the intervening couple of weeks, I have continued my ongoing discussions with the Westwood Teachers Association. And as the school committee knows, there are many aspects of our reopening plan that are subject to collective bargaining. And I want to be clear about that, that there's a collective bargaining process that needs to happen between the school committee and the teachers' union. And we, of course, continue to work away in good faith through that process, and that's something that I imagine will continue over the next several weeks. I, and I know all of you, have continued to hear from many parents. So thank you to all those people who have emailed us. We have a dedicated email address for people to share with us their viewpoints and their concerns and their questions about reopening, and we definitely have been reading and reflecting on those emails. We, in the last couple of weeks, held several forums for parents. We wanted to hear from parents. We wanted to provide some information because we knew people really needed some details and to answer questions. And of course, we've continued our conversations with teachers. And I have to say that process in the last couple of weeks has been very helpful. And, you know, as a leadership team, we have met several times to process what we're all hearing from these various forums. So to say, what are the questions that keep coming up? What are the themes that we keep hearing, whether it's a parent forum at Deerfield or the middle schooler? We've been trying to really listen to those themes. And I think that what you're going to notice tonight is that where we've landed with our models has really incorporated much of that feedback. So there were some really good issues and suggestions that were raised in that process, and we have tried to consider them. So, you know, I need to remind myself that we are in a difficult time. We are, we are still in a pandemic, and I'm hearing from a lot of folks, and I try to remind myself that everyone's experience is true, and that there is, it clears me that there is no solution that achieves everything that everyone wants. And I will say that I have appreciated the empathy of people who have actually written to me. They've reached out to say that I recognize that, and I've appreciated that. And so really, what we are doing here is we are trying very hard to balance the need to educate kids and to assure that kids have connections that we know was really important for their development. And I recognize that education is fundamentally our mission, and so this is a significant focus for us. And we have to balance those educational needs also with health and safety, which is, of course, also our fundamental obligation. So all of these things have been on our mind. So I'm going to share my screen with you, and I thought what I would do tonight is just, I have a lot of information to share, and so I'm going to try to move through it efficiently. And even as much information as I'm sharing about the reopening model tonight, there's this layers and layers of information. And when the final plan is published, which we believe will be Monday, people can read as much detail as they want to read. If they want to read about specific protocols, they can read it there.
Emily, have you transitioned? I'm hearing that some people can hear you clearly and others not, so we just need to continue to enunciate.
All right, I will speak up and enunciate. Thank you for telling me that. All right, so let me share my screen. I'll be my first.
Emily, should we have the mic toward you? Like, should I?
Oh, that's a good idea. That would be a great idea. Thank you.
We can move it around a little bit. I could have just moved the mic.
All right. Well, first of all, I'm having a little problem here. All right? Just one second. I'm wondering, Allison, if you can share your screen.
You want me to try it?
Yes, because the only thing, I'm on a new computer, it's asking me to.
Okay, hold on. Thank you. A little bit. Let me do it. I'll make sure. There. I'm going to ask Maia that you can put a straw frame. There we go, we see it. Great. Hold on. How's that?
That's great.
Can I? I will see your slide.
Sorry, you'll agenda.
I won't do that.
All right, great. All right, so our reopening plan, and we'll start with the next slide, Allison. Thank you. All right, so first, I just want to do a big thank you to all faculty, staff, administrators, parents, students, for their insights, their input, their expertise. As you know, we had four working groups, and there were about probably 60 people in total who were involved in these working groups. They each had sort of a different task to look at. We had a system where the district leadership team acted as the steering committee, and we would debrief each day to talk about what had happened in these working groups. So thank you to all those people. It's an incredible amount of work. As I mentioned, we had hundreds and hundreds of people attend our parent forums, and so we appreciate that level of engagement, lots of email to read. We did conduct student focus groups, and we thank those kids who participated. They provided some great insight. I want to thank our ESY faculty and staff. They gave us a lot of feedback about their experience that we've learned from. The members of CPAC, whose children were involved in the ESY program, were very generous about sharing their thinking. And then also, of course, the Western Public Health Department, because we have been consulting with them throughout this process.
Definitely. Other than that.
In creating our reopening plan, we have relied on many guidance documents. And so the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which we refer to as DFC, has provided us with several guidance documents. They sort of each week release more guidance. So we have hundreds of pages that we've been poring over. And I know that we in our planning, and also I know the school committee members have looked at all of those documents, have looked at the CDC guidance, we've looked at guidance from the American Academy of Pediatrics. We found very useful a school reopening guide that was created by something called the Parabola Project, which is sort of a joint venture with Ariadne Labs and some folks at the Chan School of Public Health at Harvard. And that was something that the Massachusetts School Superintendent's Association had collaborated with them to provide that resource to school districts. And then, of course, consultation with local and state public health and medical officials. So got a lot to go on. At the outset of this process, we developed a set of guiding principles and planning priorities that were used to guide the work of the working groups. And I won't read through all of them here, but, you know, we were focused both on academics but also on issues of FDL and providing the right social emotional support, thinking about our priorities, using really an equity lens to consider the needs of all of our students, building on our strengths. We were very focused on making sure that we could operate seamlessly within the different models, knowing that we may have to pivot from one to the other. Thought a lot about lessons learned and looked at survey feedback that we received from the spring. And so we've been thinking about how to address some of that feedback in terms of consistency of experience. We really want to develop plans that we think are realistic and sustainable. I feel like we need to be both ambitious but also honest about what we think is possible. And we always know that we have to remain flexible and make adjustments, that this is a changing and challenging landscape. You know, the words that we kept using in the spring continue to use as fluid. Things change from moment to moment. So we've been creating a plan for three models, as you know. Our plan that we are required to submit to the state must include a plan for all three models: fully in-person, hybrid, or fully remote. As we looked at, developed these models and started sort of assessing the pros and cons of each model, we were looking at different factors. So we looked at health and safety factors associated with each model and relevant public health data. We looked at the learning implications associated with each model. We looked at the related implications for teaching in each model. We certainly thought about implications for families and their ability to support their children in what is really an extraordinary time. And of course, we really have had to look quite hard at financial and human resources, including the ability to fund and hire staff in each model, to look at transportation, to look at operational costs. And so there have been a great deal of variables. So having done this analysis based on these factors, I will tell you that the district right now is planning for the hybrid model in September when students return to school. And I shared a lot of my thinking about that at last month's meeting, and we had a discussion about that, so I'm assuming that isn't a surprise. And that still, a couple of weeks later, is where we have landed. So I just want to say, this is a slide that was produced out of that Parabola Project that I mentioned, and it's something that I think really kind of captures how we've been thinking about it. But, you know, we've had to take a balanced view of risk, and we're all very interested in mitigating risk, understanding that there really is no context in which there is no risk. And what we've realized is that there are risks associated with returning to in-person school, and there are risks associated with not returning to in-person school. And the risks might be different, right? They exist kind of in different realms. But we've really thought about this a lot, that we have to sort of look at all of these different factors and what we know about COVID-19 right now, acknowledging that that does change, right? That there's emerging research. And so we've really tried to take this balanced viewpoint and do what we think is best politically. All right, so I'm going to jump into the models here. So the first thing is that we are very interested in being able to transition seamlessly from model to model. And so we determined that the schedule for all three models will be the same. And there are some things here that have changed since a couple of weeks ago, so I just want to point that out. So our plan right now at the elementary is that school will go from 8:50 to 2:15. So that's a little later in the day than we were presenting a couple of weeks ago. At the elementary level, we do intend to serve lunch, to have a lunch block during the day. There will be a box for lunch available for purchase. The middle school schedule will be from 7:50 to 1:10. Dismissal will happen before lunch, but there will be a takeaway lunch option available for students. And at the high school, the schedule is 7:25 to 12:45, similar to the middle school. Dismissal before lunch, takeaway lunch option available, right? And in the fully in-person or hybrid models, there will be mask breaks and also snack breaks incorporated into the daily schedule at all levels. In terms of the school calendar, I've gotten a lot of questions about when's the first day of school. So this is my proposal for all three models. So DFC has lowered the 180-day requirement for students and also directed that student instruction has to begin no later than September 16th. This is in recognition of the fact that we really will need time with faculty and staff for professional development, on safety protocols, on new instructional strategies, and this is going to be a very important time for us. And so the plan at this point would be that faculty and staff begin on August 31st, which was the original date when they were scheduled to return, so that they can prepare for the year, and that Westwood's first day for students would be Monday, September 14th. This is, of course, subject to school committee voting and counter, but this is what I'm recommending. Okay, so let's start with the fully in-person model. So the fully in-person model, in this model, obviously, all students return, but with new safety guidelines: masks, hand hygiene, physical distancing. Students would return five days per week. In the fully in-person model, class sizes are what they would be in a typical year, right? So 20, 22 kids, for example, in a class. In the fully in-person model, classroom desks are arranged with three feet of physical distance between students, plus a six-foot zone at the front of the room for the teacher. The teachers would then modify their instructional strategies as necessary, given that physical layout of the room and the need to maintain physical distance. So I would emphasize that with our typical class sizes, in the classroom sizes that we have, to achieve the three-foot distance, you would be using every single bit of space in the classroom, right? So that would change what we'd be able to do instructionally in, for instance, our elementary classroom. One of the things that you recall we were first tasked with from DFC was to investigate the fully in-person model and to do an assessment. DFC directed in their original guidance that came out on June 25th that school should, and this is a quote, "aim for six feet of distance between individuals where feasible", and that we had to maintain a minimum physical distance of three feet in combination with other safety measures. And as I just alluded to, Western's classrooms just don't accommodate six feet of physical distance between students, given our physical space, our class sizes, and available facts. We aren't able to achieve that higher standard of six feet. So again, while many of Western's classrooms can achieve three feet of physical difference between students, and that's if we do things like we take non-essential furniture out, we put it into storage units, and we utilize other spaces in the building, so in some cases, we might have to sort of move classes to alternate spaces. You know, it could be done, but that three feet did create some significant problems. So, you know, we have to be careful about accessibility. There, we got, you know, a three-page memo from the state fire marshal with all the rules about dimensions, how far you have to be from the wall, how far you have to be from egresses, and so that got very complicated. And also, just literally, sometimes we could fit the desks in, but there would be certain students who didn't have a clear sightline for the board, for example. And so it was problematic. We did assess using alternative spaces like cafeterias and libraries to become classrooms. But that then put some limits on opportunities for students to participate in arts and special classes. It didn't support a schedule where students could eat lunch or snack in school. If students are seated at three feet apart in a classroom, you can't then eat lunch in there, right? You would have to somehow move past the kids out to somewhere while they were eating. We certainly have thought a lot about the use of outdoor spaces that we might use when the weather is nice, and I think that's a wonderful strategy. We have to create models, though, where we still have the capacity to do something if it's inclement weather, if it rains, or, you know, obviously, it will get cold at some point. So those are all significant. And then also, you know, in this fully in-person model, the size of the cohort doubles, right? And so that increases the impact in terms of contact tracing and quarantining, should that be necessary. And we talked about that when we sort of processed our experience at ESY. So we thought about all of those things, and I will say that, you know, the conclusion we came to is that we don't think that right now, under sort of the current conditions, that we are able to effectively and safely implement that fully in-person model. Okay, so I'm switching gears here to the hybrid plan. And there are a lot of details to discuss here. So the hybrid plan is a combination of in-person learning and remote learning. And I just, I sort of want to draw attention to the fact that there are aspects of our hybrid plan that have changed since I sort of threw out some potential models at the last meeting. So in our hybrid plan, students in grades two through 12 are grouped into two cohorts, and we're referring to the cohorts as the Monday cohort and the Thursday cohort. And here's what the schedule is. So we landed on a schedule where the Monday cohort attends in-person on Mondays and Tuesdays. They are remote on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And the Thursday cohort is remote on Monday and Tuesday, and on Wednesday and in-person on Thursday and Friday. So you'll see that Wednesday is like a swing day when both cohorts are fully remote. And so when I talked to you last time, we were talking about our remote Monday, we got a lot of feedback from parents asking us if we had considered this model. And so we did. We went back to the drawing board. There was a big discussion in all the working groups about the pros and cons of different things. And we think that having Wednesday as the swing day will be really helpful operationally, and it will allow us to do really thorough cleaning and disinfecting in the middle of the week between the cohorts. We, of course, will be cleaning and disinfecting every night as part of our cleaning protocols, but it just sort of gives us that space in the week to take care of that and to, you know, allow some time for the building to kind of air out a bit and then get the custodians in there to do that. I will say also that, as I have been speaking with superintendents in many, many districts, I think that we're going to find that most districts are landing on this schedule. So I'm hearing some other schedules, couples, but this seems to be the one that a lot of people have landed on. I think there's probably reasons for that, right? There's some things about it that really work. So you noticed that I said that that So I'm hearing some other schedules coupled, but this seems to be the one that a lot of people have landed on. I think there's probably reasons for that, right? There's some things about it that really work. So you notice that I said that that was the plan for grades two to 12, and so this is something that we also have worked on. We heard some feedback from people about, is there a way to get more in-person time for our youngest learner? And so we really looked at that issue, and we think we have been able to work that out. So in the hybrid plan, kindergarten and grade one classes are divided, so students can attend in-person four days per week. So in kindergarten, we would have one class, but they're split into two cohorts, and they would be in different rooms, with the teacher and the kindergarten assistant working with each room and sort of collaborating. In grade one, we have basically split our class sizes, and qualified staff will be reassigned and spaces will be repurposed to create smaller classes. And so I will say that people will need to think a little bit flexibly, that in order to accommodate this, we may have to use some spaces that normally, might not be classroom spaces. But we think that the benefit of having our youngest learners in-person outweighs, you know, any challenges associated with that. In addition, we are going to be adding a preschool classroom, so that the integrated preschool can maintain a program of both four- and five-day schedules. So you can see the schedule, there it is, laid out on the table. So in the hybrid plan, we create cohorts. We are working through that process right now. We have said that we will commit to making sure that siblings across levels will be in the same cohort. So as principals are working out cohorts, they're communicating, you know, the elementary principals are communicating with middle school and high school to make sure that we keep families on the same schedule. So while, so the cohorts won't be strictly alphabetical, but we're kind of using that as a starting point, because you need to start somewhere. But they won't be strictly alphabetical, because as we're creating the cohorts, we will have to make adjustments in order to create balanced cohort and even cohort. So in any given high school class, it doesn't work out to just cut it at a particular letter in the alphabet and make it even cohort, for example. So it's a lot of tweaking and taking a look at individual schedules. Having created the cohorts, the in-person classroom groups will be about 10 to 13 students, and that will allow for six feet of physical distancing of the class. At the elementary level, students will spend the day with their in-person cohort. At the middle school, grade levels will be confined to their wing of the building. And at the high school, we talked about this, with the complexity of the master schedule, you really can't create cohorts at the high school. So they will still have to change classes, but we've created a schedule with longer blocks, fewer classes per day, in order to limit movement around the building. I fully understand people probably really would want to know what cohorts their student is going to be in for planning purposes, and so we're working quickly at that, and students will receive their cohort assignments next Friday, August 14th. We will email people their cohort assignment. So what happens when you are not in-person in the hybrid plan? So the plan is for students to virtually attend class on at-home dates. So all students, of course, will have a district-issued device, and I mentioned last time that we are committing to giving a device to all students, grades prepay to 12. In the hybrid model, the students who are in the classroom will participate in, you know, a relatively typical way, be very similar to what we're doing in the classroom right here, right now, right? The students at home can see, hear, and participate in the classroom virtually through technology tools. And we have spent some time piloting these things, sort of trial and error and figuring out what we think is going to work best. So certainly using things like Zoom and Google Meet, but also using 360 microphones and speakers for full group discussions, using virtual breakout groups and pair shares. And in addition to laptops, which teachers have, and they would need that for Zooming, teachers will also have iPads and Apple Pens to facilitate teaching in sort of a more natural way, while also allowing students at home to see what is on the board. So this would enable teachers to continue to move around the room and not have to be sort of seated in front of a computer, and to write things on the board, and to draw, and, you know, do all the things that they might typically do on a whiteboard. The microphone and speaker is interesting, because what it means is that the students in the class in-person don't necessarily have to be on screens. So they might just be participating normally as students. Because we have the microphone and the speaker, they can have a class discussion, and the students who are at home can hear the class discussion, they can hear the comments from the other students. And then, if the students who are at home, doing the Zoom, want to participate, they can also make a comment, and their voice comes through the speaker, so that everybody in the room can hear what they're saying, right? So the people in the room don't necessarily have to be on devices. There might be other times when the instructional plan makes sense for everybody to log into Zoom. Maybe the teacher wants to do some virtual breakout groups, maybe she wants to create breakout groups or pair shares between someone who's in-person and somebody who's at home, right? So we're going to be trying to really make it sort of an experience that the people at home can still sort of be in the classroom, so to speak. We've gotten a lot of questions about people who are interested in opting out. And so in the last parent questionnaire, we asked people, if we were in a hybrid model, what do you think would be your likely plan? Tell you that 91% of families said that their plan would be to send their student to school in the hybrid model, leaving about 9% who indicated that their plan would be to opt out and to access a remote-only option. So we discussed this situation quite a bit in our working groups with teachers. We did finally get the state LMS option yesterday, we took a look at that. We got a lot of feedback from parents about what they hoped for in an opt-out plan, and we decided that the best option is to not access the LMS model, but instead, students whose families determine that they won't attend school in-person will participate virtually on all days and stay connected to their classes here in Westwood. Students who opt out and choose remote only will need to commit for the first semester. So we will be asking people to make that decision, and then we're going to be creating cohorts based on those numbers. And so we wouldn't be able to sort of transition in and out all the time. But I think there would be an opportunity at the semester to then say, do people want to make a different choice? Perhaps something has changed, right? And we could allow people to make a different decision then.
All right, a couple of clarifying questions.
Sure.
So K and one, will they have, will they have a fully remote option, whether, are the classroom?
Yeah, it would be the same, well, it's actually a very interesting question. So, hmm, that's a question I don't know the answer to, now that I think about it. So I will have to think about that. I guess I had been assuming, yes, that it would be the same plan, but as I say it out loud, I don't know that we have a thorough discussion about that, so let me think about that.
All right, um, just clarifying questions, there will be other comments later, but there were kind of last time about the Mondays and the holidays, I think you've taken a look at that, but maybe just clarify that.
We did, so we've taken a look at the calendar for the whole year, we've counted how many holidays fall on Mondays, there are other holidays, so we have, you know, a day off for election day, we have Veterans Day, we took a look at the whole thing, Thanksgiving, and we think that it will balance out in the end. When we do look at the calendar in detail, though, I may have some suggestions around Thanksgiving and some things that we might think about there.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, great. All right, so I'm going to turn it over to Allison through that.
All right. So I'm going to just walk through kind of what we think, we imagine this might look like, and kind of at the elementary, middle, and high school level. And this is work that was, you know, some work was done by principals and then taken over by the working groups and sort of back and forth. So this is kind of a mashup of a lot of people's thinking. So elementary kids on Mondays, Tuesdays, or Thursdays and Fridays will be following kind of the same routine, whether they are in-person or at home, which is, there's kind of a morning routine at school, which is for the in-person kids, but then morning meeting kicks off and everybody is together for that time period. It's the time for a classroom community building, FBL work, a preview of the day, and during that time, the remote students would be zoomed in and connected to their in-person classroom, teacher and friends. During, and I want to say too, this is important, kind of, this kind of plays the tongue question a little bit, we do anticipate that even in K and one, there are going to be kids who are bounced out for temporary reasons, so of students who might be in quarantine for a time period, we want to make sure that all those kids have the ability to kind of move in and out as needed. There would be four academic blocks during the day, and each academic block has kind of a similar pattern and structure. The block begins with a mini lesson or a sort of full group interaction, and then breaks down in different ways, depending on what's going on with instruction. So we want to make sure teachers have the opportunity to use good instructional strategies, where they are, you know, breaking up into small groups or giving kids independent work time. But the idea is it's, as opposed to last spring, which was a little bit more kind of all, it was just very different, depending on kind of what was going on on what day, and a lot more, I think, students doing more asynchronous work, where they were on their own for a while and then with their teacher. This is a lot more teacher-directed, if that makes sense. So you've got a number of academic blocks built into the day. In addition, each of those academic blocks would have a 10- to 15-minute break structured in, and those breaks are going to do a couple of things. Some of them are going to be just about mask and movement breaks, and a chance to sort of get outside, take a little bit of air, get your wiggies out, because I think that, you know, the setup's really different in-person than it would be in a normal elementary classroom, when we think about it. In some of those times, what we're, what we've done, and this is different from our original thinking about the hybrids, is to build in these sort of mini specials. We had initially thought about having the specialists do an end-of-the-day remote special, and we ran into a couple of issues with that. You know, number one, it's remote, so it just, it doesn't have some of the same kind of cool elements that you get when you're live and in-person. Number two, we were concerned about kind of equity issues. If kids go home, some of them may get back on, some may not, and so it was going to be a really different experience kid to kid. And thirdly, there's just some simple scheduling problems. If everybody's doing specials at the same time, either the group size had to be really large, or, or we had to, like, not have as many specials all the time. So some days you'd have it, some days you don't. So this is a way we can still do sort of smaller tidbits, and I think the specialists were awesome about thinking and talking about this, just they, they really have an interest in keeping those kinds of things alive for kids, because for kids, they're very important, you know? Often, they're the places where a lot of the FBL stuff happens, right? They're developing social competencies, they're learning to work together.
I would just say, Tony, that we thought a lot about your comments about not wanting it to be sad.
Yeah, this is the, like, inside, right?
That's joy.
Yeah.
We're referring to breaks. So two things are being accomplished, you have, well, your math, probably mask break?
Yep.
So how, if you had a special, so a mask break, is that a mask break during the entire time, or it's just timed for a couple of minutes, and then maybe you'd have arts for 12 minutes?
It's probably more the latter, but it depends. You know, if the special happens to be physical education and we're going outside, we can probably use a mask break for full of 15 or 20, and we're giving this 10 to 15, but we're imagining it's going to kind of be a little fluid, depending on which special. The elementary principals are working with the K to 12 directors who oversee the specialists around kind of having the specialist be sort of building-based and really working with the same cohorts of kids for longer stretches of time. So it may not be, the specials are going to look different, no matter what we do, because there are just certain things we can't do, too, but we're really trying to preserve a sense of the things that we know kids love about them and the things that we think are important developmentally.
And those mask breaks also work well for the classroom teacher?
Absolutely.
For the classroom teacher, get them up through.
Yeah, they, they get a little time to take their mask off and regroup and, you know, go to the restroom and all those good things that elementary teachers rarely get to do, right? They work all the time. So there's a lunch built in and then kind of closing time for the day, and like I said, all of these things are places where we're, we're really excited about the possibility that the technology will allow us to kind of keep the kids remote and the kids in the classroom, sort of working together and connected as a whole community. Wednesday would be a little bit different, and I want to kind of highlight some differences. You don't have the whole drop-off in the morning transition time, and you don't, you know, these are all times where there's, you want to build in snacks and movements, but we don't have masks on, so you don't need mask breaks anymore. We also decided to try and find a way to build in a full-length special during the Wednesday day, so kids get like a longer block of those things that they really love and enjoy. And some of those things you can actually do better in remote, so things like singing and like jumping around and breathing hard, you know, those are things that can happen in the remote environment currently, so that is part of what was built in here. And the other thing that the team really worked on is thinking about synchronous versus asynchronous on this remote day. They wanted to, with the bigger groups fully remote, they wanted to front-load a lot of the back-and-forth time before lunch, because they felt like, you know, once we hit lunch and beyond, it's going to be hard to keep kids, it's a long day for a large group of kids to be on. So more asynchronous stuff in the afternoon, but almost entirely kind of synchronous, checking in, doing stuff together as a group in the morning. I think the team, the elementary team, did a really nice job sort of breaking down, what do we think it would look like?
So Allison?
Yeah.
So when you say lunch and recess on the remote day?
Mm-hmm.
And then asynchronous work time, does that mean they log off at 12:30?
It could be, although we imagine there are going to be people on, so I think that the idea is kids log off knowing they've got stuff to do. One of the things, the ideas that the team was talking about is finding ways to make sure kids can access help when they need it at any point during the day. We have instructional assistance, we have kind of literacy pairs, we have folks out there who are content specialists who do intervention. Part of the thinking is figuring out how to deploy those tools strategically, so whenever kids are asynchronous, there's somebody who can help them out if they get stuck.
Okay. And I'm just getting some texts that people are having trouble hearing us.
Okay.
Is that we just need to yell?
Okay, all right. I'll speak up. Okay, so that's kind of the elementary snapshot. At the secondary level, I think the really critical piece is the longer blocks, just thinking about what the longer blocks will do, because that is a real difference, even though the schedules are kind of more similar to typical schedules. And again, we're still looking at, we're kind of uniting the kids at home and the kids in school into kind of a single, kind of a single experience. And I think part of the power of that is it allows us to kind of keep learning rolling at a pace where we, if we weren't able to do that, and kids had to do kind of some time with the teacher and then some time independently, we're concerned, and teachers were concerned about what that does to curriculum over time.
Okay.
So again, classes would start full group together, kind of connecting with each other, and then teachers would do what teachers normally do, you know, they start all together and then break out. It's either independent work or small group work or pair shares. Those are all things that we're sort of working out ways we can do with technology, so that they're both safe in the classroom and connecting the home and in-person kids. At the Thursday, the student schedule at all grades include all the core content areas, English, Science, Math, Social Studies. In sixth grade, it's also that semester each of Culinary Arts and Consumer Ed and Health, and in seventh, eighth grade, World Language sort of takes that place. The big changes at the middle school level, in addition to the kind of longer block courses, is that the arts would be in this single arts block that's compacted, and students would experience their arts as sort of mini courses, two of them per trimester. So I'll show you what it looks like in the visual, it's a little easier to kind of grapple with there. So here's what the middle school folks mocked up for a schedule. So if you look up the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, those are the long blocks, and you notice they're quite long, so they have plenty of time for, you know, lots of academics focus, and this is just a sample of what it might look like. So in this So in this particular case, you've got, over the course of the two in-person days, you see all six classes. And then again, over the course of the two longer remote days. On the Wednesday remote day, you actually see every class in a shorter version. And in that case, it's both groups of kids kind of online at the same time, zooming all together. One thing that you'll notice is missing, that appears to be missing from this, but that is actually baked into the thinking is some advisory, which includes both the F D L component of advisory and the academic component of advisory. So the middle school's proposal right now is that every block one and four would include every day a 10 to 15-minute break period where kids do get a short math break and then they have an advisory F D L-related activities. So that's in the first part of the day. The next block, blocks two and five, is the snack break and another math break. And then the final block of the day, another math break and, and an academic advising break, which is great for the end of the day when you need to kind of get organized and think about what's coming next. So that's kind of how they're, they're conceptualizing it at the middle school. And again, the, the arts rotation part would keep art. Wait, I have to back up for a sec so I remember. So it's art, music, drama, engineering, computer science, and physical science. The change there is that the music classes, which are the performing classes, would be condensed into sort of a music block because as we're going to talk about a little bit, some of those music options are not really on the table for us short-term. Like chorus and band in large groups aren't something we, we can sustain right now. We're thinking creatively about ways to get them back as soon as we can.
How will culinary arts go?
Good question.
I don't know if we've gone that far as to how that would.
I think it's, it's interesting. I mean, part of culinary course is the kind of consumer end part. I do imagine kids would do a little more of the, kind of the more academic-y part, learning about things in person and then actually be more of their cooking at home.
They did the cooking bring it home.
Yeah. Actually kitchen look. Oh, great. Maybe we can work some cleaning in there.
I'm also just going to add one thing, Allison, that if you could flip to the next slide. So we did get some questions about the amount of like what we call time on learning, instructional time. And what maybe is hard to see, but we've done the math, is that, that the core academic instructional time in this model is the same, if not even a little more, than the core instructional academic time in our traditional model. And so where the time has been carved out of, it's been carved out of passing time. So we don't spend as much time transitioning. And also, as Allison said, normally kids might have band or chorus, right? And so it's, it's, it's come out of those classes, but not on a math or E L A special stage time.
And Wednesday, are they starting at 9:40 at Thurston?
Yeah, it's a later start, right? This is the current model, the current schedule. And I think this has still got to get worked out. And the reason for that is one thing that gets lost in this model, they can't, the way the schedule used to work at Thurston, you could build in common times for teams to meet and talk about students and kind of figure out what was going on. You can't do that with the long block, the way it's currently designed. So they needed to carve back out team time in there somewhere. And that's what that's about. All right. And then the high school, I think this is kind of a little repetitive as of before, but it's important to note that the high school, they, they really worked hard to keep the course structure the same. So the basics of the course structure and the schedule. Some of the courses obviously have to look really different, particularly in the arts. But I think those teachers are working on ways to sort of keep their curriculum moving and modify it heavily to make sure kids who are really deep, because it's fully elective, these are things kids are choosing to do. We want to find a way to meet them where they, where their interests and loves are and try and make it work for them. All right. So the high school schedule, you really have to look at more of a two-week band in order to get the full picture because in addition to the core academics, you've got things like lab blocks, seminars that prop up periodically. And then offsetting those, sometimes there are free blocks and things like that. So this is a sample two-week ninth grade schedule. I'm hoping you don't have too many questions about it because my understanding of the high school schedule is limited. Emily's got a little more and Amy, you know, Davenport, if she's online, can help us out.
So I do have a question. So I would really encourage the team to think about pushing back the start time on remote Wednesdays. If we're going to be serious about the men's own physical health, there's no better opportunity to have thought of, think about pushing back than pushing back that start time on Wednesdays remote.
Make it similar to the middle school?
Yeah, or, yeah.
I think it would be hard if you guys have one child who has to get on at 7:25 and another one who doesn't have to get on until 9:40. So I agree with Tony, if you can look at that seriously.
We'll look at that, sure.
All right. And again, I think, I think we talked about this before, but the, the whole model here and that earlier dismissal time is really sort of connected to the idea that, that the populations within these two school buildings are so large that figuring out how to get them lunch is a real, it's a surprisingly complicated thing. We do imagine a kind of grab-and-go lunch program so that students who, who want to order a lunch and snag it on the way out the door if they have other activities or a job or, you know, younger siblings to take care of, that'll be an option. So we addressed this a little bit. You know, what about these really, really critical programs like band, like chorus, like P E? And I, I have to say, our folks who work in these areas are, are wonderful. They're very creative and they want to find a way to kind of keep the, keep the music alive. We do know that these, there are some significant restrictions that are going to keep us from doing the things that these classes are typically doing. But we're, in each case and each level, we're looking at different ways we can really modify and keep a spread of the program going so that we are able to rebuild once we can. We've also started talking about ways to build in some extracurricular opportunities for kids for whom these are really their, their real love. So I know the high school drama person has some wonderful idea already for a way to kind of make a fall play happen. So I don't understand it, so I'm not going to try and talk about it, but I know he's, he's on it, so. And I'll, I think, one thing I want to say before ending, and Emily alluded to this earlier, the design of these different models was really so that if we have to move at any point, either at the full district or a school within the district or even a classroom within the district that might have to go remote temporarily if we had a, an outbreak of some sort or some scale, that we want it to be seamless. We want everything to kind of continue to operate and to have minimal disruption. So the, you'll notice, we wanted to keep consistent schedules and expectations between all the models and really keep common experiences for kids who are both in-person and remote. And I think those two fundamental principles, people thought about a lot and worked really hard to try and figure out how to articulate. And because of that, the fully remote model is actually pretty much the same as what you would see on remote days in the hybrid model. That's really all it is. The one key difference is that the two groups, who would normally be separate, get to kind of connect more together in that remote model. But we would anticipate keeping the same type of schedule, the same types of structures, routines, and expectations.
I think I just want to emphasize that, I think it's probably clear, but just in case it's not, that this fully remote model is not what we were doing last spring, right? That synchronous instruction is a core component of the remote learning plan in the fully remote model. And so, you know, we really have been thinking that those days that we have together as faculty and staff before students are arrived, that we want to make sure that we emphasize professional development for teachers at the start of the year, that focuses on instructional strategies for effective teaching in the remote environment. That, I mean, we would need that in the hybrid plan. And we also want to ensure that if we have to pivot to a fully remote model, that that can be a really effective, good experience.
How do we, you know, in, in, in normal times, we monitor, you know, what teachers are doing. How will you monitor as time goes on through the semester?
Well, you know, so what.
Monitor, evaluate, definitely.
Yeah, in the spring, you know, principals were members of Google classrooms. So, you know, that's one way, they can kind of see what's happening. But then they would attend personally. So they would pop into Zoom calls and that's the way that in-person, you would just like pop into the room. And, you know, the spring was, it was pretty hectic and busy. So I, I don't know how much of that was happening at that time, but that certainly will be part of the, part of the model.
So speaking of popping in, this is a general question across, and we've had a little bit of discussion on this. How do we ensure that our students are in a classroom without parents popping in? Without parents participating, judging. Also, we have part of the issue too, I think, to deal with. And we want to ensure that our students feel comfortable participating and that they're not being judged by anyone outside of the classroom.
Yeah.
That our, that our classes are not being taped and so on. So I know we talked a little bit about this, but that's something.
I know the technology team has talked about this in particular and they're thinking and talking about sort of ways we would basically push out information to parents, just clearly outlining what those parameters are at the start of the year and building those into almost like our acceptable use types of policies. Because there are real privacy and confidentiality issues. You know, we are a district that wants parent involvement in, in many, many ways. But dropping into the middle of a class without, you know, any sort of invitation or so forth could be really destructive and distracting. We wouldn't want any adults doing that in a way that's not appropriate. So we want to make sure that those boundaries are very clear and maintained. And, you know, I think teachers are, you know, need to be able to sort of, if something goes off the rails, they have to be able to shut the Zoom down. And I think that that's going to be an important piece.
Right, and I think it's an important piece too, probably from a teaching standpoint, that you want to be able to teach again without, like, we're here to teach kids not to have, have parents.
I had a couple of questions about the cohorts, if you don't mind. So when we met a couple of weeks ago, I had thought there was discussion about cohorting based on like neighborhood or location. And I really like that idea. I think it can further kind of preserve the cohort in terms of infection control, right?
Yeah.
Kids are more inclined to hang out with their neighbors perhaps and for like childcare and logistics. So I was just wondering what happened with that.
Yeah. We looked at it and to be honest with you, the logistics of it, we just couldn't figure out. So it would be easier to do at the elementary. It's really hard to do at the secondary level for people are taking so many different classes, right? I mean, it was just like too many variables to keep straight. And in and of itself, and then certainly to keep families on the same schedule across levels was really hard. So we decided that we needed to go with sort of a more streamlined, efficient approach. And that's going to allow us to get the cohorts done by next Friday and be able to tell some, tell people something specific.
And then my other question related to that is I'm just wondering how students who receive special education services, how that's going to work? Are they going to be pulled out of the cohort and grouped, you know, with other kids in the cohort? Or is there going to be kind of crossing over or what that will look like?
Yeah, so you know what, we're going to, we have a slide about.
Oh, good.
And I will let Abby chime in because I know that there was like a three-hour powwow, I think, maybe yesterday.
Yeah.
Yeah, great, thank you. So Abby, we'll let you talk about that in a bit.
Okay.
Okay. So just in general, some expectations for students, no matter what the model, attendance will be taken for every class and every model. We are going to return to our typical grading and report card system. When students are participating virtually, they will be expected to have their camera on. And that was feedback that came through loud and clear from parents, from teachers, I think even from some students. And we will assist people in creating virtual backgrounds if that is something that's, you know, important, that people want to secure sort of where they, where they are. That we, we need to see kids' faces when we're, when we're teaching. Okay, so that was sort of the teaching and learning aspect. And then I'm going to move into health, safety, and wellbeing. And there's so much to talk about here, so I'm just going to kind of hit some of the highlights. Okay? So I'll just start with, we really know that we need to develop a community-mindedness framework, right? That we have to develop a culture where people understand that we have responsibilities to each other and that our behavior impacts everybody's health and wellbeing. So for one example of this, parents and staff, they will be asked to do a screening daily based on a COVID-19 symptom checklist that we will provide to determine whether or not the staff member or the student should report to school. Specifically, if there's anything on that symptom checklist that you're checking, you should not report to school. So that's one example. We have established, I said COVID-10, I don't know if that is, a COVID-19 monitoring and response team. I'll talk about that in a second. And related to that, this team, one of the things that they are responsible for is implementing a whole bunch of procedures and protocols. And we're in the process of creating a COVID-19 health and safety website that will be publicly accessible so that people can see what all of the protocols are. There would be like decision trees, there would be things that it's like, if this happens, this is what you can expect will happen. So all that information is going to be available.
One of the working groups has started that already and did wonderful work so far.
Yeah, they did a great job. So we have a district COVID-19, we're calling it the COVID-19 Monitoring and Response Team. And you can see the diagram here. And so, you know, if, if, the team sort of falls directly under the Director of Student Services, but sort of the lead on the team is a registered nurse. And then the registered nurse is somebody who communicates with our consulting physician, our school physician, and also is the liaison to the Westwood Public Health Department. The nurse is overseeing what we're referring to as our COVID-19 lead. So these are two full-time people, one for elementary, one for middle school and high school. And also, we are going to hire on a contract basis another nurse that can be deployed across the district as necessary. The R N, who is in charge of this team, will also of course communicate and be a liaison with the building-based nurses. But what we're trying to do here is really create sort of a streamlined system for dealing with everything that's related to COVID-19. So these people will monitor the implementation of protocols and the COVID-19 response plan. You know, what happens if someone tests positive? What happens if someone presents with symptoms? They will monitor the health and safety of students and staff. They are able to respond quickly and effectively to things that come up. They will track local and state trends and emerging research, be the liaison with public health, and they're going to serve as points of contact for families when communicating about concerns related to COVID-19. So we will be able to funnel all communication through sort of a centralized process. We think it's going to be very important for us to have sort of the big picture of what's happening in the district. We also are really thinking a lot about training and professional development. We know we're preparing to welcome students back to school after this prolonged period of closure. It's been a very uncertain time. A top priority will be attending to social and emotional needs of students. We want to help them to feel safe and happy and to really go through that process of rebuilding the school community. So that will be a focus. The district professional development is initially going to focus on mandatory safety training and recommendations for supporting the wellbeing of our staff. So we've already created some online training that people will be doing and then in-person safety training during those initial professional development days. And very importantly, we know when students return, a top priority will be to help them as we establish new routines and help them understand what the expectations are. So some of the things that we're going to have to do routines for, you know, masks, I think is the next slide, let's see. Yeah, so masks for face covering. We've determined that we think that all students pre-K to 12 need to wear masks. And obviously, all staff will wear masks throughout the day. There of course will be exceptions for those who have a documented medical condition or for some reason related to instability that precludes them from wearing a mask. And I certainly want to acknowledge this isn't going to be perfect. We understand for, you know, little kids in particular, that can be hard. Our experience at E F Y though, honestly, is the kids were great about it. We kind of watched that and they're able to do it. And so we think that that consistent approach is important. Obviously, the mask is going to need to fully cover the nose and mouth. Individuals will need to provide their own mask. We're also going to ask kids to carry a backup. And obviously, we will have extras on hand if somebody needs one. And we've talked a lot about math breaks. So we're going to be creating a math culture.
Are there any, like, there's been research on this recently. So like band, piano are pretty poor. Or is there going to be any guidance on like?
Yeah.
Or is there going to be any guidance on like, something you can't do?
So, yes, we're reading about like definitions. What is a mask, right? And so we'll be providing that kind of information for people. There are also some good resources. It's almost like a school readiness skill for little kids at this point. So we'll be sending some information out to parents about how you can get your kid ready for this and sort of practice and talk about it. So we'll get that, all that information out to people. So masks are, of course, is one example of P P E, personal protective equipment. We just want to assure people that the district has purchased P P E and building supplies to protect students and staff from spread of COVID-19. We have elaborate charts that are based on ratios that were recommended by DESI, the P P E needed for every particular job description. You can see some photos here of things that are already in place. And there's a list there of all the different kinds of things that we are purchasing. And I think on the next slide, you can actually see that it's coming in. And we are using the high school cafeteria right now as our staging area for the distribution of P P E. And I want to compliment Lemon and her team because they got the orders in early. And we're doing well on that. And there are some problems in supply chain that other folks are experiencing, but we're in very good shape right now. Of course, we'll be needing to work with people around personal hygiene protocols. We will have routines established for frequent hand washing and/or hand sanitizing. Classroom sinks will be stuffed with soap and paper towels. The classrooms will be exist, so they can sanitize or available in classrooms, offices, common areas throughout the building. And we will, of course, will provide proper instructions about how to use those things. Part of creating these routines and kind of creating helpful reminders has to do with signage. And one of our working groups really thought about all the different kinds of signage that we might need. And we've determined, we have, we'll have consistent signage throughout the district. So everybody isn't going to be typing up their own sign. And that will be posted to remind people about things like physical distancing and masks and all of those different items.
And will all of the hallways, to the extent they can be one-way?
So every building is going to have to determine the plan for their particular place, right? Like Deerfield, their carnival lane is one hallway.
Right.
So, you know, but we're going to, we, I've seen like arrows on different sides of the hall to remind people where to stand. In the high school, we're really talking about creating like a clockwise traffic flow. And so we'll be thinking about, I mean, there are more kids here too. So we've got to think more carefully about that. Cleaning and disinfecting protocols, lots to say on this. But sort of the big picture, classrooms, of course, will be cleaned and disinfected daily at the end of each day. Desks and sinks will be wiped down, and the entire room is going to be disinfected with this, with a solution. There are two kinds there that we're looking at. It's EPA listed to kill COVID-19 and other viruses. The cleanliness of bathrooms and bottle fillers will be monitored during the day and periodically disinfected and, of course, thoroughly cleaned at night. All common areas and high-touch surfaces will be thoroughly cleaned and disinfected at the end of each day. Custodians will periodically wipe down high-touch surface areas during the day. And then in addition, and this is part of that like culture of sort of the community is all participating in this, and this is something we all need to be thinking about now. Classrooms will be supplied with spray bottles and paper towels to allow for the development of routines like wiping down desks or taking a moment to clean off your keyboard or all of those things that we're all kind of doing as part of our life routines at this point. So we'll make sure that people have the supplies to do, to do those things. Oh, I just did a little photo here. So we've purchased some new equipment. So we have these electrostatic sprayers. This is part of the disinfecting process. And I think the one on the right, like, is sort of a backpack kind of thing. The other one is the sprayer. But we have some equipment now so that we can achieve this relatively efficiently.
It looks kind of like those good splatters.
That's what they look like. We've been doing a lot of work in terms of heating and ventilation systems. The district has conducted an assessment of HVAC systems in all the schools. And of course, the HVAC system from school to school is different. I certainly would acknowledge that we do have some older buildings, but it's a familiar reality. In all of our buildings, air purifiers will be supplied in the nurse's office and what we call the waiting room. The waiting room is our name for, every school has an isolation room that is different from the nurse's office, which is part of the COVID-19 response protocol. Mechanical HVAC systems will run continuously to draw in fresh air, even outside of school hours. Hallway windows will be opened when the weather allows in order to improve fresh air circulation throughout the building. Bathroom windows will be open when weather allows. Classrooms or offices with no source of fresh air, either mechanical or the window, will not be used unless we can come up with a suitable air purifier for the space. So certainly, this issue of fresh air is clearly one strategy that we're reading a lot about in the guidance. The other has to do with filtering. And so we will install the highest-grade filters that each of our system is able to accommodate. Filters will be replaced quarterly on the mechanical HVAC units. Where the dampers can be controlled electronically and on a set schedule, we'll also set them to supply fresh air at dawn each morning per student's arrival. And air supply vents will be inspected and ensures that they're not open or blocked in any way. And I would just say that the issue of filters, things like Kepa filters, is something that we've really started talking about and we are interested in pursuing. We think that we need to get some more sort of expertise and guidance to fully understand that, but we're actively on that right now. Just in terms of transportation, we're leading routines around that. Thank you to all of the people who participated in the last questionnaire. And I really appreciate a lot of people who've clearly, sort of, in the interest of helping the community out, have decided that they will transport their students to school. And that is really helping. So about 30% of students will access bus transportation. And there are protocols there, so one person per seat. Kids will be assigned seats, you'll board from the rear to the front in order of pickup. Masks are required on the bus. The windows will remain open except in extreme weather conditions. And students and parents should maintain six feet of physical distance at the bus stop. We believe that based on this level of ridership, in the hybrid model, we wouldn't need to do double bus runs, which is great news. So we'll be working that out over the next couple of weeks.
Has, are we looking at, are there going to be a lot more cars dropping off a lot more kids?
Yes, we have thought about that, yeah.
Is there going to be some streamlined drop-off, pickup process?
We're thinking about that. We're even thinking, are we going to need to like stagger arrivals? So we, yeah, we're giving that some thought. And, yeah, I mean, it's interesting. So it will impact traffic patterns in terms of pickup and drop-off. It also may impact traffic patterns in towns, which could impact buses, buses the length of route. But remember that in the hybrid model, only half the number of people are arriving, or leaving on a given day, right? So it's sort of a thousand kids coming to high school, it'd be 500. So that's, you know, maybe an offset. So we're going to have to see how that goes. But I, I-
I'm thinking more of the middle school and not elementary? Because high school, a lot of kids drive.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think middle school and elementary schools, we should run a little bit back there.
Yeah, you got to give that some thought. And I have to say, I, you know, when you lie awake at night in the dark thinking- I, which I do a lot now. You know, it has occurred to me that we're just all going to need to know that like the first couple of weeks, it's going to take some time. We're just going to have to get the lay of the land, see how things shake out, and probably make some adjustments. Because there are just going to be things that we couldn't anticipate, you know?
I bet you had mentioned the symptom checklist. Is that going to be a written, like, attestation? Or is it more of like a mental checklist you expect, can't give a-
Yeah, so right now, we're thinking that it will just be an expectation that we need to educate people about, but we're still giving that some thought. You know, E S Y, we did have a written attestation. It's a much smaller scope, and we kind of did a like hand, a newspaper out the window. We couldn't do that, yeah.
One idea we are exploring, but we haven't made any commitments yet, is a half-based system. But we have to explore whether that will work for us and whether it's going to be easy for them.
Got it, yeah.
I'd really encourage you to double down on this conversation because my, part of my worry isn't just COVID. It's actually, the more people we get saying, oh, for stomach flu, for colds, for seasonal flu, the, I mean, you know, the better. Obviously, it's always better, but just part of it, I'm just worried some kid goes home with a stomach bug and people are going to upset. So I think the more, we can really encourage people. And maybe even encourage people to do temperature checks, not just because of COVID, but more maybe for flu or other things.
Yeah.
I think the more we can encourage that and move that, the better, these are my views.
Yeah, I agree with you. I mean, that's really what we've been talking about, right? Like, what's the purpose of just having that process? It really is just like a daily reminder to think for a second. And we've been doing that over the summer. We have a QR code on our door. So as we come to work, we just use our phones, and we each have to scan in and we, you know, attest that we're symptom-free. And it is just that moment to like crop check with yourself, right? Yeah, and so really, we're just trying to say, how would we manage that in a streamlined way? You know, for 3,000 people, but we'll definitely work on that. Okay, and then just sort of finally, engagement and equity. I said that we were really taking an equity lens as we did all of this planning. And so a couple of thoughts on that. So first, technology access. The district, you know, is committed to providing access to the tools kids need in the hybrid learning environment or if we need to transition to remote. So we do have a limited number of Wi-Fi hotspots, which will be made available to families if they are in need of that. We want to make sure that people have like a reliable, stable internet connection and families can contact tech support to request that. In terms of additional learning supplies, we get a lot of questions from parents about like, are there like low-tech learning materials that could also be home? And we have heard that feedback. So things like elementary math workbooks or ELA or literacy text or hands-on science materials. Yeah, we will have a plan to like send those home so that people have those things in the hall. The school supply list isn't going to include some items families maybe haven't purchased in the past, masks, obviously. But, you know, we'll want some headphones with built-in microphones, and we want kids to have their own. Lab safety goggles, we won't be able to disinfect goggles between classes. And so we're just going to ask everybody to have their own, and we'll tell you exactly what to get. And obviously, we will work with any family through the support in accessing these backhaul supplies. Access to meals. The current hybrid model provides access for free, reduced school lunches for students in all grades during the in-person days. Using, you know, everyone can use the grab-and-go model, right? And that will also be the method for students to have access to free and reduced lunch. And we are certainly committed to supporting students who qualify for free and reduced lunch during remote learning days in any model. We will have a system for doing that. In terms of Boston resident students, we have certainly been thinking about those kids as well and sort of needs that may be specific to their context. And so the district is really committed to ensuring Boston students get whatever they need to be successful during hybrid learning. They will have access to remote academic support for core academic instruction. And we are carefully planning around cohorting and transportation to ensure students are safe during the longer bus rides to and from Boston. And then high-needs students. So I'm just going to ask Abby to leave in here. I think this might-
Yep. Okay, so, hi, everybody. I wanted to say this is a very, you know, short synopsis of what will be a much longer conversation at our upcoming parent forum on August 11th for parents of students with I E Ps and 504 plans, as well as follow-up discussions, I assume, in this venue as well. But the biggest piece of information, I think, is that we've come up with a working definition that we feel fits both what we've heard from the Department of Education as well as what we know our needs to be here in Westwood for students who we would offer the ability to come for all four days in person. So those are referred to, the students are referred to as high-needs students by the Department of Education. So we've gone through a process with the principals. We've gone through a process with special education staff. And we've identified the following sets of students who we would offer additional time to. And it would be really at their parents' consent. So some people may want to take us up on that, and some people may not. And we will be detailing that process in the August 11th parent forum, so folks will have next steps. But briefly speaking, we'll be offering all four days of in-person attendance to all of our students who attend district-wide specialized programs pre-K to 22 via their I E P. We'll additionally offer that same four days to all students who have previously qualified for extended school year services. And the thinking there is that there was a team process with parent input and consent and teacher input about a student's needs and potential risk of regression, and that that process was true and valid, and we want to honor that. And so we want to continue to offer additional support to all students for whom E S Y was already determined through a really holistic team process. Additionally, in the E L L world, there is a special assessment for students who are identified as English language learners. And there's a scoring system for that. And for all students who score in the first three levels, level one, two, and three, we would offer the ability for them to come to school for all four days in person on the theory that they need as much support learning English in a in-person context. And then there are two additional levels, levels four and five, on that same test where the theory would be those students are much actually better suited to practicing in the more typical instructional model of their class peers. And then finally, for any students who qualify under the McKinney-Vento Act, which supports students who are homeless or who have other specific needs under the law around housing stability, any students who qualify under that, we would offer the four days in person to as well. So that's the biggest picture. There's a million details under that. And I would welcome everyone who is interested and who has a child with an I E P or 504 to come to our Tuesday evening meeting.
Okay, so, as you are aware, the school committee has on their agenda tonight to vote to determine the fall reopening model this evening. The final reopening plan will be published to the community on Monday so that folks can read the whole thing. Parents will next week receive a final questionnaire. And I'm going to ask people to get that back to us by Friday, August 14th, and I'm probably going to say like by 9:00 a.m. to indicate if their student will be returning to school in the district's reopening model. Or, I'm assuming for a second that fully remote is not the model, or if they will be opting to remain fully remote. And the reason I'm just going to ask people to give us that information by like 9:00 is because we said we would get the cohorts out. And so we're going to start planning the cohorts with the information that we have on the last questionnaire. But if things changed, then we would have, you know, a few hours to make some adjustments.
And then that, August 14th, is that the binding decision?
So, yes, that would be the binding decision. And I know people are going to say, what if everything changes between now and September 14th? And I fully acknowledge that's like a whole month, right? And a lot could change. And so I think this is one of those things where we say we're all going to have to remain flexible. I mean, the things could change to the point where the school committee wants to revisit the reopening model, right? All kinds of things could change, I suppose, by September 14th. But I would like people to think of this as a binding decision. And then if, you know, specific concerns come up, we can address that.
And it'd be binding for a semester?
For a semester, for a semester.
Just to, I know we'll talk on the calendar later. I don't even know what for a semester is, why in the semester?
It gets to like mid-June, you were going to say.
Mid-June, okay.
Mid-June, yeah. Okay, and then if you can go to the, so next step, okay. So and this sort of gets to the conversation we're having. So this is our plan as of August 6th, right? And I would say if we learned anything in the last five months, it's that things can change quickly and require adjustments, right? Already tonight, we've gotten some good feedback. We will go back and look at those things. We, of course, will continue to monitor public health data. I mean, I think what is allowing us in Massachusetts to, you know, contemplate returning to school safely is that thankfully, our public health metrics in Massachusetts are quite good compared to most of the country, right? And quite good specifically in Westwood, better than in the state. But we, of course, will continue to look at that. As I said before, but I want to emphasize, we continue to engage in the collective bargaining process, right? So this is the plan. The district is moving forward with this plan. We are figuring out the logistics of how to implement this. And, you know, we don't yet have an MOA with the WTA. And so that's still on, you know, ongoing work. And there's still lots of work to be done to plan for and implement the day-to-day details, right? And work through challenges that arise. So, I mean, we've thought of a lot of things, but there's another layer of thinking to be done as we really start to get into the nitty-gritty of this planning. And this is all happening very quickly. We're moving fast. So those are our next steps. One last thing I wanted to mention, and so, and I, this is, I'm sure going to be disappointing news for many people. We have really wrestled with the issue of extended day. And I've been getting some questions about whether or not we will have extended day in the fall. We've just spent hours discussing and examining the situation. And in all honesty, I have to say to the committee that it's my recommendation that we not open extended day in the fall. There are a number of reasons, but I would say, let me say, we certainly recognize the value of the program without a doubt. We feel that our ability to open in a hybrid model very much hinges on our ability to implement our cleaning and disinfecting protocols with fidelity. And so we think that operationally, we cannot have the program after school. We just need to have our buildings emptied out so that we can start the cleaning and then the disinfecting process and have sufficient time to do that. And we've decided we need to prioritize that and getting school up and running. I will say that as we, you know, get further into the year and we have a better sense of how we're doing operationally with these things and sort of what it takes, I would leave open the possibility that we might come back and say, you know, for example, halfway through the year, maybe we say now we think that we can, can do that. So that, I think, is where we have, have landed on that, on that issue. And I want to super emphasize that the folks who work in the program are fantastic. And it's a wonderful program, and it would be our intent to bring it back someday. But that's where we are today. Oh, and I have a final slide. So what will school be like? So I just wanted to share with you because this is a photo of a student taken today at ESY. And I love this picture. And I was thinking, you know, I've been over to ESY on, I don't know, a few occasions at this point. And, you know, what will school be like? So school is going to be different, right? I mean, clearly, it's going to be different. But here's what I can tell you from having been at ESY. There are still happy kids and happy teachers. And there are a lot of things about school that still feel like school and feel joyous. And I just want to assure people that we're really committed, and I know that the adults in, in this community are committed to providing that kind of experience to students. And the sky is masked up, but I think you can tell he's smiling behind the mask, so. All right, so that might win a record for the longest presentation.
Well, thank you for that.
School committee.
And it's probably one of the most difficult and most important presentations that you've done, I would say, and at least that I've seen anyway. So thank you for that, a lot of information. And we are going to now move on to public participation. Before we do that, we're going to, I'm going to do some instruction and tell people, tell folks something a little bit about, first of all, what public participation is and what it means. So this is a public meeting. Public participation is a part of every meeting that we have. We, our policy says that public participation is...
Shoot, you're on it, huh? I know, I know.
You all didn't see what was going on. That's okay. All right, so this is a part of every public meeting that we have. It's an opportunity for residents of Westwood to ask questions, to make comments pertaining to our, our school district, education, so forth. This is not necessarily a time for dialogue. We are not required to answer questions, and I will tell you that for purposes of this evening. In order to ensure that everybody who wants to do so is in fact heard, we, as a committee, are committed to listening tonight. And we, we look forward to your comments. We look forward to your questions. But again, we will be in listening mode. I will ask, because we will be limited on time. I'm going to ask, well, our, our policy says, first of all, that comments are to be limited to three minutes. I'm going to ask people to be mindful of that. We will be timing you. I'm hopeful that folks will go shorter than three minutes so that we can ensure, again, that everyone is in fact heard. Typically, and according to our policy, public participation is limited to 30 minutes. I think that in view of the circumstances, that it would be move us to extend our time. And so I would, at this point, ask if we can have a motion to extend public participation to 60 minutes for the purposes of...
I'll make that motion.
Hold on a second.
Okay, do we have any further discussion on this? Okay, so I'm going to take a roll call to see, on this, for the purposes of this vote. Charlie Donahue? Sorry, Charlie, I can't. Oh, I got the thumbs up. Okay, Charlie. Maya Clarkin, yes. Amanda Phillips?
Yes.
And Tony Mullin?
Yes.
Carol Lewis?
Yes.
So the motion is carried. It is unanimous. Our public participation tonight will be 60 minutes. Now, some more instruction before we continue. As I mentioned, tonight's meeting is being streamed courtesy of Westwood Media Center and is available online at www.westwood.k12.ma.us/live. If you wish to make a comment during public participation, you must identify yourself with your name and address. I will not take comments. I will not take questions from anyone who does not provide their name and provide their address. If you have already put a comment into the queue and you did not include that information, I would ask you to resubmit your question. There are two options here tonight to provide your comment. First, you can go via the form posted on the website. You, again, must include your name and street address for your comment to be read aloud. Remember, this is live, so your comments and your questions will be heard by the community. If, the other option is to join us via the Zoom webinar link, which is also posted on the website. If using your computer, please use the quote-unquote raise hands feature located at the bottom right of the window, and you will be called upon. Once you're called upon, please wait while the host presses a button to allow you to unmute. You will be prompted to unmute yourself, and then you may speak. If you have used your phone to participate in tonight's meeting and want to comment, press star nine, and you will be called upon by the last four digits of your phone number. Remember, use your full name when you sign into Zoom. If you are participating via Zoom, I'm going to ask you to please leave the webinar and resume viewing via the on-stream, online stream so that we can accommodate additional commenters, all right? So that's a lot of instruction, and, but we, we are here and we want to hear from you. So we are going to open public participation at this time. And we're going to start, well, Melinda is going to field the questions, but I think we're starting with the...
Either way, do you want John to read comments or the group floor? Sorry, the Westwood teachers.
I was going to start with, I think we start with the teachers association.
Okay, great.
I know that Paul Brenham would like to make a statement. Paul is representing the Westwood Teachers Association. So at this time, Paul, you have the floor.
Okay, can everybody hear me okay?
He can hear you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Paul Brenham, president of the Westwood Teachers Association. I have had the pleasure of being an elementary teacher at the Sheehan School for 21 years. I am here tonight to speak on behalf of the WTA, and I thank you for this opportunity. The school committee, district administration led by Emily Parks, the WTA and the Westwood community have a long history of mutual respect, collaboration, and compassionate dedication to our students and their families. This relationship is important, appreciated, and valued. The WTA is eager and ready to be part in finding the answers to many important questions related to school building preparation, hybrid teaching models, and overall cohort health protocol. Like the school administration, the WTA has spent the summer searching for solutions to the problems at hand. We sympathize that you are in a difficult position. While the school committee's role often includes making decisions regarding the well-being of our community, we know that you have never been asked to make such a critical decision regarding the lives of our students, teachers, administrators, and staff. Our members believe that neither the remote nor the hybrid model effectively replaces full classroom teaching. However, a significant majority, 70% of our members, have voted to start the school year with a full remote model. We believe that, at this time, a remote model is the safest approach for the health and well-being of our community. A remote start will allow for seamless opening to the school year uninterrupted by cleaning, hand washing, and socially-distanced transitions between classes cutting into learning time. Being a remote will remove the anxiety of being hyper-focused on distancing and safety and allow for more quality, quality learning and relationship building between students and teachers. Starting with the remote model provides the district extra time to ensure that the buildings meet all safety standards and inspire confidence for eventually returning to in-person teaching and learning. To the parents, we want you to know that, given the time left this summer and the 10 days allocated by DESI to prepare for the upcoming school year, we are confident that we can create a remote learning experience that will be robust, challenging, fun, and engaging for our students. We want school to be what we all have come to expect and demand from the Westwood Public Schools. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of the WTA membership. We appreciate that you are willing to consider input from all stakeholders. The health and safety of our students, their families, the faculty and staff continue to be our number-one priority. We urge you to vote for a fully remote start to the school year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, we are going to, at this time, move to the written comments and questions.
Sarah Waterman of Nine Pheasant Hill writes, "I would like to ask the committee's support in the safety of the town's teachers and staff. I speak for many teachers who know in their heart that remote learning is not ideal or perfect. However, it is the safest choice for our community right now. Thank you for listening to the teachers' union and our ideas." Deb Kelly of 35 Church Street writes, "Thank you for the transparency you have shown in both the middle school and Martha Jones parent forums. I appreciate all the information you have shared and your receptiveness to feedback. With that said, I would like to say that I hope Westwood will not choose the state-run LMS over an in-house option. I understand that there are many factors in play, but I feel like a local option would provide much more valuable to those students who need to be remote. Our school system is fortunate to have a strong and supportive faculty with positive personal relationships to our students. I do understand a local option presents additional challenges and that there may be a strong motivation to outsource this cohort, but I do not believe that that is a fair, that that is fair to that population. I'm also concerned because it does not allow families the flexibility to pivot to remote learning. The numbers moved to an uncomfortable level. It seems that if a state-run LMS were in place and I'd longer felt comfortable with my children in school, I would have to pull them, and they would miss a portion of school until they could join the LMS. This seems unreasonable to me. I do not feel I should be stressing about deciding between my children's health and safety and education. As of right now, the hybrid model seems viable. However, I think that the future and the nature of COVID is very uncertain. I would like to be able to transition my kids online if numbers start to increase. Thank you very much for your time." Kristin Stumpo Gennari of Greenacre Road writes, "What is the current state start of, start of school date in September? And also, is there a deadline for the union to render their vote on the proposed reopening plan? Is there a deadline in which the governor will render his decision to open schools or go virtual?" Kit Sekler of 73 Whitewood Road writes, "Considering that the coronavirus situation changes rapidly, will there be flexibility for the district to change its mode for the school year, in-person, hybrid, or remote, based on new data before the start of school or for families to change their choice? Choosing in early August may not reflect the situation in mid-September." Rebecca Lowny of 14 Reservoir Road writes, "Thank you, school committee members, for your tireless efforts on behalf of Westwood students. I would ask you today to please consider not outsourcing full remote learners to an outside learning management system. There are families within the district who may not be able to participate in in-person learning due to health concerns and other reasons. These students should not be outsourced to an outside placement. Please consider using teachers within the district to teach full remote learners, especially in the hybrid model. Full remote access could be easily achieved on all days as half of the students will already be learning remotely. Whereas some students may need to be accommodated for, with a full in-person learning model within a hybrid model, so too should other students be accommodated within the district for a full remote learning model. Vulnerable students should not be pushed outside the district into a learning management system, rather given access to the excellent, inclusive Westwood school community." Stephanie Ramalas of 129 Washington Street writes, "I would like to request that there be consideration towards having the cohort of incoming second graders be considered for a four-day-a-week in-person model if feasible. As evidenced by the proposed plan of having first graders and kindergarten students participate in four-day in-person models, it is clear that younger students have specific vulnerabilities with remote learning plans. The cohort of students preparing to enter second grade in September 2020 experienced the emergent switch to remote learning last during the, last during the last half of first grade. And despite all the excellent work of teachers and staff in the spring, there are, there are realistically significant gaps for this cohort of students that may be underestimated. As I understand it, the Massachusetts mandate for kindergarten curriculum is 425 hours per academic year, a half-day program. And while full-day programs are currently promoted, it would seem that in this particular set of circumstances, it would be advisable to address some of the needs of the incoming second graders as they also face a set of age and academic-related vulnerabilities. I would suggest that a plan to allow increased in-person learning for incoming second graders be strongly considered at this time. Thank you." Stacy Breen-Greely of 98 Pond Plain Road writes, "First of all, has anyone on the committee worn a mask for two to three hours straight in an 80-degree building with poor ventilation? I have, and it is brutal to do so. We are not going to be able to keep children socially distanced and in masks under these conditions, which puts everyone at greater risk. Second, are our teachers even willing to go hybrid? As a doc, I have been speaking with patients who are teachers, and most are unwilling to return in person, given their own personal health risks and safety concerns. Are we even sure we have enough teachers returning to run a hybrid option? Finally, when a student gets sick during the school day, who supervises this isolation room? My impression after, after the middle school meeting was that had not been worked out, but would not be a school nurse. That would need to be figured out before day one, and certainly before you could consider returning in person. Who is going to volunteer for that role? What if more than one kid is sick at the same time? Most doctors' offices are not seeing patients with COVID-like symptoms at this time, given lack of PPE and adequate ventilation. Patients are sent to specialized respiratory clinics instead, so as not to expose others. So you mean to tell me these makeshift isolation rooms, without medical supervision, will be adequate to reduce the spread of illness as kids wait to get picked up? Returning to school is a dangerous proposition, which is getting more and more risky every day as cases in Massachusetts creep up. We should be solely focused now on making remote learning as robust as possible and on how to deliver in-person services safely to the vulnerable kids in the community who need them."
This one's rather long. Let me see who wrote it. Sorry. William Brooks of 1666 High Street. Right. Hold on. "Based on a number of factors, it would be unwise for the school committee to support any form of in-person start to the school year. We must protect our families, our elders, and our dedicated teaching and support staff. In-person school will almost certainly result in long-term cardiac and mental health issues and quite possibly death for someone you know in Westwood. Please remember this as you vote and support our children, our teachers, and our most at-risk students." Below are some factors that I and many other parents in Westwood would urge the school committee to consider. Data in the DESI report is primarily from January and February is reflected in papers cited from April and May, and both the data and the research cited is largely out of date. There is currently no plan, funding, or capacity to frequently test students, staff, teachers, or community members. Current CDC research indicates that airborne virus particles for SARS-CoV-2, the COVID-19 virus, remains infectious in the air for at least 16 hours and showed no decrease in infectiousness at the 16-hour time, while the plan makes no allowance for this. The return-to-school working group of 45 people appears to contain only one clinical professional, one public health professional, no physicians, no epidemiologists, no infectious disease experts, and no practicing clinical personnel. The DESI guidance cherry picks outdated data...
The DESI guidance cherry-picks outdated data and studies while ignoring more recent and contradictory statements by many of the same groups they cite. For example, DESI cites the Harvard TH Chan School of Public Health, but fails to note that the same organization states the COVID, quote, COVID-nineteen can travel from a human cough and distances of up to eighteen feet are not uncommon, end quote. End quote, first in the hierarchy of defense is eliminate the hazard, which means working from home if you can, end quote. DESI cites the CDC several times, but ignores the CDC's guidance to, quote, keep your children at least six feet from other people, end quote. State-level statistics cited by DESI at the time of their final guidance on July eighteenth did not indicate reopening was recommended. The percentage of positive tests was rising, and DESI chose to exclude the number of COVID-nineteen deaths, also rising, from its promotional video, and are much worse now. The percentage of positive tests has increased steadily. The average number of COVID-nineteen patients in hospitals has remained largely flat, and the count of hospitals at surge capacity likely remains flat or has risen, though no, though difficult to compare because of changes in federal reporting requirements as of July twenty-second. DESI cites the World Health Organization's school guidelines from May as recommending a three-foot distance, while the same document cites three feet only because, quote, most studies have used one meter as a benchmark for projection of respiratory droplets, end quote, not stating at all whether three feet is more or less than effective than any other distance. Although we have not heard from teachers in any of the Westwood School District informational sessions publicly, the Massachusetts Teachers Union, American Federation of Teachers, and Boston's Teachers Union all strongly recommend a remote-only start to the school year, and the majority of local teachers unions in Massachusetts take the same stand. Numerous schools have started already, numerous schools that have started already have seen immediate positive cases resulting in unplanned, poorly-prepared shutdowns and large-scale quarantines. Even with the three-foot model for classroom separation, which is, which is unsubstantiated outside of a healthcare setting, it is impossible in the Westwood schools to maintain a three-foot distance between students without cross-contamination when entering or leaving the classroom. For example, when a student is excused to go to the restroom or nurse's office, they must pass within eighteen inches or less of every student between them and the door. Westwood does not have enough teachers to staff a cohort model, resulting in teachers and staff being effective vectors between cohorts, and cohort separation is unlikely to remain effective outside the classroom. Current plans for the hybrid model do not align well with established best practices for remote collaboration from leaders in the field such as TECA, New York City Outward Bound Schools, the Bux Institute for Education, and experienced trainers from the private sector who have all been facilitating remote collaboration for a long time. Synchronous lecture is poor motivation, and most public education-focused LMSs and lecture-based curricula do not align with the ways in which children and young adults actually engage with the necessary technologies. Westwood deserves and should. Yes.
First of all, I want to thank you for, for doing this, all, all this reading, and I appreciate you doing this, and this is not, obviously not your comment, but I believe that we are past the three minutes on this one, and so I'm going to ask that you move on to the next.
Sure. Harry Catalupo of Eighty-Five Gay Street writes, how many hours of synchronous work is there in the remote model? Michelle Mackin of Three Ninety-Seven Fox Hill Street writes, I vote for in-person education. There is overwhelming data to support that this virus is not that dangerous to children. The seasonal flu is more dangerous to kids, and we have never shut down the schools over the flu. If the teachers can provide proof that they are immune-compromised or care for someone immune-compromised, let them take a leave of absence. I think we can work on getting temporary help to cover those classes. We should also be able to provide teachers with masks, gloves, and plexiglass shields at their desks. Those parents that are concerned can always opt out for the semester. Everyone that goes back will just need to sign a waiver, just like you do when you go to a doctor or dentist. Children need to be back in the classroom, not only for the academics, but for their mental well-being. Susan Gaffney of One Oh Four Conant Road writes, everything needs to be done to get our young people back to school in person. These are the least, these are the least-at-risk group, understanding that some teachers and faculty may be higher risk, they should be used to record remote lessons and Zoom sessions while also helping to prep class lessons, et cetera. Use our younger teachers, younger new teachers to be on-site with students. If necessary, eliminate busing and ask neighborhoods to carpool with masks. Use our new younger teachers in face-to-face classes. Also, consider outdoor spaces, outsource for space in local churches or Hail. Also, consider eliminating specials in the short term to focus on the essential subjects. Westwood is a small town with resources and a low incidence of COVID. We should be able to figure this out and not push this back on parents. Donna Morrison of Three Oh Three Oak Street writes, if a student is in the remote protocol and if the Westwood Public Schools opts for the LMS curriculum, how is daily attendance going to be handled and monitored? Who will the contact person be for the support since there will be none with the school, according to the district as of Tuesday? It will be the same as homeschooling, only the Westwood Schools will be purchasing curriculum rather than the parents. What are the student, what about the student-to-student interface DESI requires in the reopening guidelines, even in the remote protocol? Can students be placed in a remote cohort? Thank you all for your efforts. Time is of the essence on your parts and on the parts of parents and caregivers. It would have been helpful, but I think to have seen the preliminary panels before the parent forums and before this evening in order to form more cohesive and productive questions for you. Again, thank you all. Karen Albers of One Oh Five Edgewood Road writes, thank you again to everyone who has spent much time and thought on the plans for school in the fall. I had a question on the fully remote learning option. At the high school forum, we were told all families would need to make a decision by August fourteenth. They will be returning to school or going fully remote. Will we have information before that date on what the remote plan will be? Westwood Teachers are a learning management company, so we can make an informed decision on what is right for our children. Thank you. Donna Morrison of Three Oh Three Oak Street again. What is the date that parents and caregivers will have to let the district know which protocol they are opting into and which transportation mode they will be utilizing? Thank you. Lynn Kaminsky of Four Oh Seven East Street writes, why are adults still meeting remotely if we are asking teachers and students to extend school in person? What metrics are being used to ensure the health and safety of everyone in the community when schools are opened? Does the district have a clear plan for what will happen if or when a member of the school community dies? Thank you for considering and responding to these questions at such a difficult time. Nancy Glynn of Two Fifteen Briar Lane writes, have you considered allowing teachers to work remotely and students to have the option of one hundred percent in-person with a young, healthy teaching aide? There are a lot of recent college graduates who could benefit. If not, why? The CDC has disclosed that there is a far greater risk in suicide and drug overdoses occurred during remote learning than contracting COVID among high school students. Why aren't we evaluating these risks as diligently as the risks of COVID? Please require all instruction to be recorded. This will eliminate transition issues if someone is uncomfortable returning to, returning to in-person or if the risk of COVID becomes greater to students and teachers than isolation. Joseph Lawrence of Forty-Three Faring Drive writes, if we choose fully online, why are we compelled to use an outsourced online learning management system? Not joining the Zoom classroom with Westwood teachers and friends while hybrid students can. What is the rationale? Deidra Wojtek of Ninety-Two Pond Plain Road writes, the latest survey had two viable options. One, hybrid, and two, full-time home with an outsourced program. To the extent that the percentage of parents answering hybrid was high, many, like me, only put hybrid because we didn't want, because we don't want to outsource and/or because if kids are in school, our kids will feel left out if they don't go too. If one of the answers had been, I'd prefer that the entire school be remote with the Westwood teachers teaching our kids, the percentage wanting hybrid likely would have been much smaller. Mike Volpe of Twenty-Six Delappa Circle writes, I want to thank Emily Parks, all of the school principals, all of the staff, and the school committee. You've been put into an impossible position balancing parents, teachers, and public health. It is impossible to make everyone happy in this situation. I am sure you have and will continue to receive many passionate comments from the community, including many complaints. Thank you all for your hard work in this unprecedented and difficult time. Thank you. Karen Albers of One Oh Five Edgewood Road writes, can you please let us know what model the Westwood Teachers Association is in favor of, hybrid or fully remote? Kate Therri, Katie Therrien of Fifteen Reed Avenue writes, there are multiple Monday holidays throughout the school year. How will this impact the Monday, Tuesday cohort for grades two through twelve? Laura Cucci of School Street writes, how will kids on IEPs access their special education teacher? Diane Hayes of Eighty-four Magnolia Road writes, when does first semester end? William Brooks of Sixteen Sixty-Six High Street. Writes. Would the members of the school, well, hold on. Multiple. Educational experts generally agree that using an in-class approach for remote learning is the worst possible model. Westwood clearly experienced that in some of the cases this spring. Why was that chosen? Why did, was that chosen that for the all-remote option? Nora Walsh of Eighteen LaSalle Road writes, will you reevaluate the whole school calendar, such as eliminating either February or April vacations? Joey Lawrence of Forty-Three Faring Drive writes, can you clarify the remote option? I didn't quite catch what the remote option entails. Will remote-only students be able to interact with their teacher like the hybrid students do remotely? Katie Brooks of Sixteen Sixty-Six High Street writes, what, where are the mask breaks going to be located and how will they be facilitated? William Brooks of Sixteen Sixty-Six High Street writes, would the members of the school committee please share their personal experience with handling two-and-a-half-hour-long conference calls? And how many of them seem reasonable to schedule back-to-back every day? Brian Hack of Twenty-C, Twenty-Seven Sexton Ave writes, will the families who choose go with the hybrid model be required to sign off on or sign a waiver to hold the district and the town of Westwood not responsible should a child or parent or guardian of contract COVID-nineteen as a result of being in a given school building? Has the school district and/or the town of Westwood assessed the liability associated with opening of buildings? Nora Walsh of Eighteen LaSalle Road writes, what about orchestra at Thurston Middle School? Richard Grasso of Forty-four Oak Street writes, my understanding is that DESI has entered into a gentleman's agreement with the teachers' unions in Massachusetts that would allow the children of Westwood Public School teachers to physically attend school every in-person, while the children of all other parents can only physically attend school twice a week, assuming the implication, the implementation of the Westwood School Committee's proposed hybrid system. It would seem that such a plan singles out and extends preferential treatment to Westwood school teachers and their children at the expense of all other public school students and their parents. It also appears that this plan has no educational purpose or merit, but in reality is simply a methodology of providing school teachers with daycare for their children at the expense of all other parents who find themselves in similar situations, but without the luxury of having built-in daycare, as is prioritized for only teachers under this proposed plan. In addition, I am concerned as to whether such a plan violates both federal and state laws and regulations regarding equal access of all students to public education, equal protection under the law, and the Massachusetts Fair Educational Practices Act. As the Westwood School Committee attorney reviewed the above-described plan to determine the legality of such a proposal, has the Westwood School Committee or the Department of Education requested an opinion from the Massachusetts Attorney General as to the legality of such a proposal? I'm requesting that this plan be revealed to the public so that all Westwood Public School parents can understand what is being proposed and voice their opinions. Also, that the above issues as to legality of such a plan to be placed on the agenda. Nora Walsh of Eighteen LaSalle Road. Writes, what of the students, what if a student needs specialist help, i.e. math, or is that not even an option at Thurston Middle School? Brian Hack of Twenty-Seven Sexton Ave writes, correct me if I am wrong, but I read one, that once students and parents commit to a totally remote option, they won't be able to participate in the hybrid model? As this is all a work in progress, some may not be comfortable going the hybrid route initially. I'd like to see students and parents have the option to advance to the hybrid model when and if it proves successful. Thank you. William Brooks of Sixteen Sixty-Six High Street writes, since a large portion of COVID-nineteen carriers have no symptoms while they are initially contagious, how is the district expecting students, parents to realistically screen their children? And are parents effective at keeping sick children at home? For example, not just giving them Tylenol and hoping for the best? Catherine Bland Brooks of Sixteen Sixty-Six High Street writes, what feedback have you had from teachers regarding the preferred model, specifically which model does the Westwood Teachers Association want? Laura Cucci of School Street writes, thank you for, you have, thank you for huge efforts to help keep our children safe. Matt Macy Phelps of Two Ninety-Five Clapport Tree Street writes, the point about mental health move and moving back remote Wednesday start times begs the question of why not all days? Busing will be below full capacity, potentially allowing elementary, middle, and high schools to all start at similar, more reasonable times. In the area of following CDC guidance, shouldn't Westwood adopt the CDC's recommendation that school not start before eight-thirty? I and many of my fellow Westwood High School alumni from twenty thirteen have experienced improved physical and mental health, mental health and well-being in our college and professional lives with more reasonable start times to the day. The pandemic is offering the chance to reset routines that had become ingrained in life. Why not this one? Laura Cucci of School Street writes, if we end up fully remote, do kids on IEPs have to have to potential to go in person? Jason Kitayama of Sycamore Drive writes, what happens if the WTA votes yet doesn't agree with the approach? Rachel Duncan of One Oh Five Briar Lane writes, thank you very much for all, all of the thoughtful work you have done. It is truly appreciated. Given the uptick in COVID cases in the state, at what point would we switch to fully remote? Will this decision be made by the governor or in the district? Kit Sekler of Seventy-Three White, White Wood Road writes, indoor mask breaks do not seem safe. Could you provide more details on why we would do that and for how long they last and where they would be? Liz Williamson of One Twenty-two Wilson Dale Street writes, two things. First, on the presentation, it stated the district-supported LMS model being offered by the state, but in the oral presentation, it was stated all children would participate with their cohort. Please just confirm. Also, how will you handle mandatory quarantines when people travel outside the state? How will families, staff, and students be handled in regards to this? Darlene Wong, Council of Forty-Three Westland Ave writes, I am deeply concerned about the required synchronous attendance online from nine to twelve fifteen on Wednesdays and eight-thirty to two fifteen on the other two remote days for my second grader. It seems unrealistic to expect that kind of engagement remotely for such a length of time for this young age. Can parents, guardians, or tutors opt their students out of remote attendance on remote days and attendance in-person class days? Parents, guardians, tutors, and students instead access hard copy class materials to go over in person with their child at home, keeping up with classwork but minimizing screen time and increasing student engagement. Neighbors who are able should be allowed to establish in-person learning pods with other neighbors at home that will keep up with classwork and keep learning and in-person experience and offline. This is a way to increase in-person socialization with neighboring kids while staying engaged with and limiting a tedious and unhealthy amount of screen time. Katie Brooks of Sixteen Sixty-Six High Street writes, how are you planning to keep students of different cohorts separate outside of the school day? Michelle Doherty of Fifty Hawthorne Street writes, thank you all for your thorough, hard work on these plans and for your transparency. I understand that we may end up fully remote due to the path of the virus, but I feel that the hybrid is best. It both mitigates the risk of the virus and gives the kids the in-person relationships that they need for mental health. I have a student that is new to the school district, and she would greatly benefit from meeting kids in person, even if it is only two days a week. Thank you for your consideration. Katie Brooks of Sixteen Sixty-Six High Street, trying to manage in-person students as well as the attention of remote students at the same time seems to be an overwhelming and ultimately ineffective task. Is there any plan to help teachers split their attention between essentially two separate classrooms at once? Erica Howe of Two Oh Four Pond Street writes, thank you all so very much for your tireless work and dedication to the health and safety of our students and staff. You are doing an amazing job. It was discussed this evening that changing from remote to hybrid would not be possible other than at a semester end. However, if a family chooses the hybrid model and then feels uncomfortable with rising numbers, et cetera, can we then change to the remote model? The remote model seems like it would support this ability to change, and families should have that safety net in place. Thank you. Tom Palata of Saint Dennis Drive writes, I appreciate that without further guidance and support from the state is difficult to adopt a full-day in-person model and have therefore continued to advocate to DESI and the governor. As an administrator of a residential school open during this pandemic, I know in-person instruction can be done safely. I would implore you to follow the guidance from the CDC, including recent guidance released July twenty-third, highlighting the significant harm of remote instruction. Quote, the harms attributed to closed schools on the social, emotional, and behavioral health, economic well-being, and academic achievement of children in both the short and long term are well-known and significant. The best available evidence from countries that have opened schools indicates that COVID-nineteen poses low risks to school-aged children, at least in areas with low community transmission, and suggests that children are unlikely to be major drivers of the spread of the virus. Reopening schools creates opportunity to invest in the education, well-being, and future of one of America's greatest assets, our children, while taking every precaution to protect students, teachers, staff, and all of their families, end quote. I hope that Westwood will follow the recommendations of experts and lead the way in providing a maximum amount of in-person instruction, while our positive rate is extremely low. I feel that the damage of another year of remote or even hybrid learning will cause significant damage to the education and social and emotional growth of these children. I recognize there is a risk to implement in-person instruction, but that risk must be weighed against the risk of not implementing it. This can be done safely while community transmission is low and with the current policies and procedures in place. Westwood demonstrated this during their summer program. You will have positive cases. That is okay and expected. The important thing is to communicate promptly and effectively, contact trace, and contain the spread. The value of in-person education should not be underestimated. The value of in-person education should not be underestimated. A generation of children who do not get these experiences for a prolonged period is unprecedented, and we must do whatever we can to avoid this. Our children are depending on us." Tom Palata of Saint Dennis Drive writes, parents voted ninety percent they would like to have a hybrid model. Are teachers willing to take a pay cut as many Westwood parents have had to do from their employers or have been laid off and will now have to add extra resources that they will have to pay for due to the need to now teach their kids five days a week? Will the town reimburse parents that have to pay outside help to have their kids learn while they figure out how to work full-time to provide for their families? This summer, there has been ESY, rec camps, games galore, sports, busing, et cetera. We have seen that in-person can be done, and parents with children in the school have shown you through voting that they want a hybrid model. Catherine Travers of one-forty-two Alder Road writes, ninety-one percent of the parents say that they would send their children in the hybrid model. Those with comments against the hybrid model have the ability to choose the remote model. I ask each school committee member with a child or grandchild currently enrolled whether they would send their child or grandchild in-person full-time and/or hybrid model. Mary Ann Miller of twenty-seven Hooper Street writes, my family and immediate neighbors support in-person learning. Young populations of children need the in-person experience and relationship with teachers to inculcate learning and teaching. Cases are low in Westwood and with the very restrictive protocols in place, potential for infection is low with alternatives already planned in that instance. We will have groups of children who have lost months and years of education, and remote learning will not be as effective. The years of education lay such a critical foundation. Children should be learning in-person in school." Refresh. Alicia Willett of thirty-eight Pine Lane writes, over seventy percent of teachers voting no in-person this fall is in stark contrast to over ninety percent of parents intending to send their children back in the hybrid model. There's a trade-off in everything we do, and as a pediatric critical care nurse in the highest volume, highest acuity-intensive care unit in the country, I've seen it all. I've never had time to plan and had to pivot in the most uncertain times. I didn't sign up for compromising my health and safety to go into this profession, but it is part of my duty. In my opinion, the benefits of a hybrid model outweighs the risks of the socioeconomic risks of fully remote, which clearly didn't work in the spring. Catherine Rowley McFadden of eight Strasser Ave writes, thank you, Westwood School Committee Principals and Emily Parks, for your tireless efforts on our behalf. We fully support the hybrid model at a minimum and, if possible, a fully in-person model. Children need to be in-school in-person for their social, emotional, and academic learning and development. The big change announced tonight was that those who opt for fully remote learning option will be able to be a part of the Westwood School Classroom option and zoom into the class via the LMS Massachusetts State Option. If enough families opt for this option and the number of hybrid student numbers reduce significantly, will those who wish to learn in-person be able to report to school four times a week instead of two times? Danielle Ialucci of Wentworth Street writes, the hybrid model allows six feet of separation between masked students and masked teachers adhering to CDC guidelines. There is an option for students to choose a fully remote option if desired. Our young students need to be in-person at least some of the time. They need a foundation in order to engage remotely. They need to meet their teachers. Yasmin Brooks of one-thirty-three Hemlock Drive writes, how will fire drills and active shooter drills be handled in light of these new requirements for physical distancing and limiting students' movement within the building? Jen Ryan of thirty-five Martha Jones Road writes, thank you for the thoughtful planning taken to develop the hybrid model. Universities and schools have already restarted in a model similar to the hybrid model with lower density, mask-wearing, and precautions taken to minimize contact. I support starting the school year in the hybrid model. I applaud your commitment to flexibility and understanding that we can shift to fully remote as needed. Being able to start the school year with some in-person instruction would be beneficial and provide important groundwork in developing routines and relationships if fully remote at some point in the future. Tom Lynch of twenty Blueberry Lane writes, neck gaiters and bandanas are being worn often by children in town, but spread germs more easily than multi-layer, well-fitted masks. Please issue specific face mask standards. The parents must make sure their kids' masks meet for school. This is easy to do and will protect children equally versus allowing some kids to spread more germs to others. Mrs. Lewis, that concludes the written public comments we've received.
Thank you, John. And John, I'm going to take this moment to thank you for all the amazing work you've been doing. I know you put a lot of hours in. You are the glue in this district. And someday you should teach couple greetings to. Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to move to our folks who want to participate via Zoom. That's where Belinda's going to help us out, right?
Yep, hi Carol. So the first person that we're going to unmute is George Laham.
Greetings. Can you hear me or?
Can hear you loud and clear.
Greetings. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I want to compliment Emily Parks on everything that she's done thus far. But I'm sorry, I'm George Laham of seventeen Aaron Road.
I'm sorry, could you please identify? I know we have your name, but your address, please?
Seventeen Aaron Road.
Thank you.
Again, my name is George Laham, seventeen Aaron Road. Many of us live in the Westwood community because of the incredible schools and the all-star teachers we have. Some of us have grown up in the community and well and gone through them and are a product of them. I think it goes without saying that the hundred percent remote learning that we've experienced between March and June was Yielman's work on the part of the staff, but definitely is not where the Westwood Public Schools have been or should be or where any of us want them to be. I think to continue the one-hundred percent remote learning would be robbing the students of the community both academically and for some of the students, even more importantly socially. I believe that the hundred percent remote learning also puts families where both parents have to work in an unrealistic situation. And again, the kids are going to end up suffering, you know, more because, you know, how do you get the parents to get them on the right calls and the right Zoom meetings and all that? In my opinion, at this time, with all the data that's been presented out there, I think the hybrid model presented by Emily is the most reasonable option and the most compromised. And I think, you know, the definition of compromise is when two parties go away equally dissatisfied. So I think that, you know, it's the best option we can do going forward. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
And now we will hear from Vicky McRides.
Hi, I'm Vicky McCready's and I live at three-forty Nahattan Street. I appreciate all the details that you gave. That was really great to see all of that. I don't personally have children in the school. My kids are grown up. However, as a community member, I'm curious that you might give more details on how you're going to report to the greater community if and when there is an outbreak at a school and how you're going to, if you've already determined a criteria for when you need to pivot and who makes such a decision. So I would appreciate if, when you publish your final plan, that you maybe speak to the risk to the bigger community if there's an outbreak and how you will address the community. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this time, there are no other hands raised. And just a reminder for the people that use their phones, if you dial star nine, oh, actually, one more hand came, but if you are using a phone, dial star nine and you will be able to be called upon. Right now, I'm going to unmute Tara Cook.
It's actually Henry Cook, ninety-nine Connor Lane in Westwood.
Okay, thank you.
My daughter is actually a student at the Hanlon School. And last year, the hybrid model is by far the best option for the second grader. She's going into the second grade. We feel. Entering last year, she didn't complete enough. Not outcomes. They need the option at least for the first semester to go in-person class for at least four days a week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we will hear from Brooke Tempesta.
Hi, I just wanted to, I think that this school committee meeting had, oh, sorry, my address is fifteen Dean Street. My name is Brooke Tempesta. And I'm an educator, but in higher education, and I have seen Zoom and online learning actually be done quite well. It is at older agents. But I also feel like seeing people in masks, seeing teachers in masks, seeing you all in masks and trying to hear you all in masks can be very anxiety-provoking. And I think there has been a lot said about the health and wellness and well-being and the hybrid model being better. But I'm really concerned about the way that students that we're thinking that they're going to return to a classroom environment that looks like a classroom. And what I'm seeing is a lot of PPE and masks and not hearing in three days a week or two days a week. My children are probably struggling to hear what's going on in the classroom and struggling more than if a teacher were really effective at Zoom and breakout rooms and really using good pedagogical approaches. And so I think the hybrid model really robs students of four days of education, and the Wednesday seems to be the best of the four days. And so that's just my opinion, is that a fully remote option gives teachers and students better opportunities to really interact with each other than what I see of the hybrid.
Thank you.
Now we will hear from Kit Sessler.
Hi, this is Kit Sessler. I'm at seventy-three White Wood Road. And first of all, I want to say that I do appreciate the effort you guys are putting into. And I realize this is a very late night for you guys. So thank you. I appreciate you hearing all of our opinions. You know, I think it's important to reiterate what we're talking about here and then kind of the life or death consequences that you guys are considering. It's a weighty decision, I know. And I know there is a lot of concern about the way an in-person model or a hybrid model with partial in-person attendance is much better for children's social and emotional well-being, and that certainly is the case. But I think it's a near certainty, if anything is in-person, even a hybrid model, that eventually people are going to get sick. People are going to get very sick and people may die. And so when you're balancing that against social and emotional well-being, keep that in mind, I think. And I know there's a lot of concern about the remote model. I wholeheartedly agree with the last commenter who said that remote model learning actually works much better done the right way. And I don't think the remote learning that we did in the spring is a good comparison. So I wouldn't compare that and think that's what it's going to be like, because it will be a lot better if we did remote. So I appreciate the decision that you guys are weighing, and I know it's not an easy one. But, you know, going full remote is the only decision that is the best one for the health and safety of our entire community. Even a hybrid model, you're about guaranteeing that someone is going to get sick. Probably very many people will get sick and some people may die as a result of that.
Thank you.
Next, we will hear from Jared Jones.
I am one of, oh, sorry, this is Jared Jones, ten Adams Street. I was one of the parents who had a child at the Downey ESY program. It worked very well for our child who has special needs. Every day he came home wondering why he couldn't stay at school longer. In fact, one time he wouldn't get on the van. I had to go pick him up because he had such a good experience with his teachers there, even with a mask. He is autistic. We worried that he would be unable to wear a mask. He rose to the challenge. He wore a mask every day for the whole time, kept it on, and was very sad when we told him, oh, the summer program's over. Now you're going to be home with us again. There's nothing without risk. I understand there was the problem with the case at the program, but as a parent, I felt that it was dealt with effectively and positively. And our child was back at school after a day of cleaning the building. So if every response to a case is like this, I'm confident in our ability. I'm glad of the teachers that chose to work at the ESY program. They made it a great experience for our children, for my, for our child. And I think if we have that level of care with the rest of the school year, I as a parent would not be concerned with sending my child to school.
Thank you.
Next, we will hear from Karen Shay.
Hi, this is Karen Shay from sixty-one Phillips Brooks Road. I appreciate all the work you've all done. I know this is crazy times. But I just wanted to go, I definitely think it's so important that kids have some, they have time with their friends in the classroom for their social and academic goals. The CDC has basically come out to say that kids have a one-in-a-million chance of dying from this. In the state of Massachusetts, there have been zero deaths total, zero from people from the ages of zero to nineteen. It seems to affect the most vulnerable people and nursing homes. People have had, been accounted for sixty-five percent of the deaths in Massachusetts. Many countries in Europe went back to school last spring successfully. Studies were done. Sweden went back on May tenth, and on June seventh, they didn't find really any, the caseload was flat. And I think the mental risks for kids, and the CDC director mentioned this a couple of weeks ago, suicide, mental health overdose, that's a huge risk. I think we have to look at this as an approach of people, the kids, kids need to be social. They're social creatures. We all are. And I think, I appreciate that the online, the remote parts of the hybrid, I think, will be better than they were last spring. But it's, there's no substitute for the physical contact, emotional contact, being with people physically. The discussions that come about, some of that can be like fostered somewhat through the online, but I think it's so important that kids are able to have, be able to go to school and be physically with their friends too, in some capacity.
Thank you.
At this time, that is it for, oh, one more, I'm sorry. Here comes Carrie Capadu Lupo.
Hi, this is Carrie Capadu Lupo, eighty-five Gee Street. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to say something real quick. I, like many others, are extremely concerned about this decision and was very interested in participating in this meeting tonight. And to be honest, I lost interest like an hour ago. So can you imagine being a seven-year-old second grader on a call like this five days a week? I just think it's a little unrealistic. Thanks.
Thank you. I think she just said we're boring.
We haven't spoken last hour.
At this point, Carol, there are no more comments.
Okay, I'm going to go back to, thank you, Melinda. Another one, too. You all, you and your team have been amazing in this process. We appreciate all your hard work as well. John, have we had any more come in?
Yes, hold on just a moment. Karen McCaskill of 21 Dayton Ave submitted this. During this unprecedented time, wouldn't it be helpful to have hard copies and textbooks to help support learning at home for the hybrid and/or remote learner? A recommended textbook for each core class would help students support learning and provide another resource for families that want it. Marcel Leslie of 150 Arcadia Road writes, we request that the committee consider extending the four-day in-person option to second graders. This is an important age and grade for in-person instruction and socialization. Also, we want to commend the Westwood Rec Department who ran a safe and efficient full-day camp with no issues. And finally, Dana Palata of 43 St. Dennis Drive writes, thank you all for your time and consideration. I'm a COVID ICU nurse with a child with special needs. I'm beyond overwhelmed with the thought of teaching my newly autistic daughter at home while I work on the front line. I have felt and dealt with the fear you are all facing. My question is, why do you expect me to fight on the front lines and save the life of your loved ones, but you won't fight for the education of my daughter? That concludes public comment, Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, John. Melinda, do we have anyone else?
There is no one else.
Okay, we're going to take a 10-second break here and see if anyone else jumps in. Okay, is, is, anyone else, John?
No.
Melinda, we're all set?
All set.
Okay. All right, so that concludes public participation. I want to thank everyone who has stayed with us. Again, we, we appreciate your input. This is an extremely difficult decision. And as one college said, we won't be able to, you know, we have to come to the best possible decision and we have folks on, on all sides. So you know, it's hard to, it will be hard to please everyone, but we're doing, we will do the best we can. And we're very fortunate to have, as I said at the beginning, incredible folks working on this process. The team is outstanding, so. But we have, we have a difficult decision to make. We are going to move on now from public participation to our action items. Okay. So first action item. Where we are. Approval of the fall reopening plan. I guess we should talk about it. Yes, I think we should have some discussion. So I, I just want to say that I'm sure my fellow school committee members can approve this. I think I've had, you know, we've all had sort of very heavy hearts thinking about this. This is not something any of us anticipated ever having to decide. I don't think the district anticipated having to put this plan into place. We didn't think that we would have to make these kinds of decisions. We have received a lot of emails and a lot of phone calls and I will tell you that I think all of us have read all of them. We are, we are listening. I, I do want to say that I think we are listening. And the problem is, is there, there's no consensus on anything really. And so here we are, and I think we have to make a decision. I think that what's clear is that there's no right decision. There's no decision that we can make that everyone will be happy with. So at the end of the day, I think we have to look at the guidance. I think we have to look at the information that we have as of today, August 6th. All of the things that Emily referenced in her presentation, all of the guidance you've read, all of the articles we've read, the podcasts we've listened to, the emails we've gotten. And I think, and, and, and think about the risks of each model. And I, I think based on that, I would follow the recommendation of the school, of the district and, and recommend the hybrid model. I think that it will give the opportunity at least to try to get some in-person learning and at the same time provide the recommended distance that the CDC has said is safe and we have the PPE that we need for people. And I think everybody will strictly enforce the masking and the distance. And it's everyone, it's in everyone's best interest to strictly enforce that. I don't really know what else to say. It's a really, I think you can tell, you know, I think we're all feeling this very, very acutely, but we have to make a decision. We have to decide something. We have to start school in the fall. And so for me personally, I think the hybrid model gives us a shot at some in-person learning with protections in place. And we really will be closely examining those protections. And that's based on the information we have now, the rates we have now and everything we read and heard. I don't really know what else. Amanda, Tony, Charlie?
I just want to say, Emily.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Excuse me.
All right, go ahead, Charlie.
First of, first of all, I just want to thank you, Emily. I think your presentation was incredibly well thought through. Allison, Lemma, Abby, I think it's a tremendous effort you did. There's nothing left to ask with the work that you did. My only concern is, and I would no doubt support right now, immediately, the, the hybrid model. My concern is how, how deep is the 70% of teachers who have said they won't, don't want it? Is this just a, a union thing? Or does 70% sincerely mean that they won't show up? And, and I can't vote until I think I know more. If, if 70% of the teachers say we're not showing up, the hybrid model won't work. And, and I'd like to know a little bit more, if we could, another survey, I'm sorry for surveys, but to say, are you in or you're out? And if you're out, you're out until next semester or something like that. So we get a hard number because I don't know how we can go with a tremendous plan. I think the hybrid plan you thought through could work. I think you're very smart to realize things may change in the public health arena. By November, we may all study from home, but I'm very uncomfortable not knowing at this stage how hard that 70% of teachers who said they don't want to come back. And I, could, could we ask another survey? Could we ask, how hard are you on that? And find out, are they, are they all third grade teachers? Are they, how bad is that? And could we plan around it? Could we still do a hybrid with the response? So I'm uncomfortable to vote without knowing more about that because I don't think the hybrid could work. And if we can't work, the sooner we find out, the better. And I don't think we need to wait and find out people aren't going to show up in September. So that's my only concern, but thank you for, well, I think it's a tremendous work, a great plan. But when the, the union teacher, and it seems like a nice guy says, excuse me, 70%, that, that's a huge question. If we don't have the staff and the people to do it, so that's my thought.
Hey, Charlie, Amanda, sorry, could I just?
I just want to, I want to make sure, if you're, I have never heard from the WTA that 70% of teachers will not show up in the fall. And I, I just want to be clear that that has not been communicated and I wouldn't want to give that impression. So they, you know, certainly have something to say about their preferred model tonight. And we are continuing through a process to understand what the concerns are and to see what we might be able to do to address those concerns and, and so I, I just wanted to make sure that it's, I've cleared that up.
Does that help, Charlie?
I just want to know what, what, what the number is. We should know if it's 70% or is it 30%? I think that, that's a question that we should be, have an answer to before we assume everybody's going to show up.
I, I agree. That's clearly something that we've been talking about, but I also think that it's important that we as a committee make a decision and, and help at least give some sort of guidance over what the school committee feels is important to, and to what the September looks like. I think parents, teachers, everybody is looking for, for some sort of clarity. And so I would hope that if we can make, if we vote tonight, we give, provide clarity on what the school committee feels is important or what it wants to do in the fall. And then we work with the teachers to really make sure that they feel protected, that they feel safe because clearly that's of paramount importance to all of us. But you know, I think if we can indicate tonight what, what model we want to see in the fall, then that's somewhere to go. I agree with you. I think that's a great point. Amanda, did you?
Um, I just want to kind of echo what Mia said in terms of this, this being an impossible situation. And you know, I've been on the board just since June and I would never have expected, and to deal with, not deal with this, but to, you know, feel this amount of pressure. But to Mia's point, I've read every single email, I've tried to interact, I've tried to solicit opinions from people I trust in the community. And in addition to that 90%, it, it, it just seems like there's support for the hybrid model. I have young kids, I lived the remote learning in the spring. And I know how challenging that is. And I feel strongly that if we go fully remote, that we're most definitely going to leave some kids behind, so to speak. You know, young children, if they're not able to go in, if we're not able to work it for the K-1 or the high needs children, you know, there are some kids that just cannot effectively learn online and furthermore, they'll regress. So that's why I'm really hoping that we can go remote. I think, you know, it's really in the kids' best interest for their mental health.
Did you mean go hybrid?
I'm sorry, go hybrid. For their mental health and their social kind of well-being and connection. So I suppose the hybrid model, thank you.
I will, I will vote to support, I'll vote to support the hybrid model. I'll vote to support it as, as a member of the committee to support it. That's our ideal. But I'd also like to be prepared for the planning of it might not work. We may have some problems and Emily, you've done tremendous planning for all the other options, but that may be the other option. But I, I fully support the committee saying, this is our, this is our ideal. This is what we like to see as a committee and if it, but we need to plan for other options.
Thank you. So first, thank you to the entire team. You really helped listen, I think, you know, where we were even two weeks ago. Some of the things we talked about, social emotional, some of the changes to the schedule, the K-1, there's been a lot of listening and I want to thank you for that. So I'm making my decision both committed to the 3,000 children of Western Public Schools, but also as a parent of two children who are both eager to go back in person. And I think I thought, echoed what everyone else said, a couple, I think there are many reasons for the hybrid model. No model is perfect, but I just want to reiterate what we've heard from some of my colleagues. These special needs, high needs kids, the stories we've been hearing about how they, the last few weeks in the ESY have been amazing. These kids were suffering, they were having issues, they were progressing, they had academic issues. And this isn't just my view, there have been many peer reviewed research showing these kids have been the ones that have been harmed the most by the, the education over the last six months. And what the stories of these children, they make me cry. These children are finally getting some sense of normalcy. And I have no idea how you can actually think a high needs child, autistic child can actually learn through a form like this. If you can find that solution, we welcome that. The second piece, and we've talked a lot about social emotional. And we've got to remember, we've got to remember when we talk about health, that everyone seems concerned with health. The, the issues are already out there. The second leading cause of death among teens isn't COVID, it is suicide. And I can't imagine that the hot, what's going to happen if children cannot come back in some ways to school to deal with some of the, the issues they're facing today. They're facing loneliness, they're, they're facing depression. You can't even get a counselor, must wait for now. We must support the hybrid model. We must try to bring back the children as best we can. I would always support the hybrid model.
So I think once we have these word with discussion in any of the room, I think it's time to take a vote, right? I know I'm speaking really slowly, maybe it's because it's late. So.
I make a motion that we adopt the hybrid model as a recommendation.
I don't, can't, can't move my papers back. Okay, so I have a motion to approve the fall reopening plan of, which has been proposed by the administration as a hybrid plan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, we have a second. Is there any further discussion on this?
I just want to say one more thing.
Yeah.
I'm very, I, I just want to say to the district and the faculty and the staff and the teachers, this has been an unbelievable past six months. It has been so challenging for all of you and we have seen how hard you worked. We've seen that you guys are literally dropping with exhaustion and yet you go to work the next day. That was evident in the ES, the success of the ESY program and how you pulled three models together in three months. And I, I feel like I am very lucky to be a part of the Westwood School District. I have three kids at all three levels at this point. I am confident that we can do the hybrids in a way that is safe for our teachers who are phenomenal and for our faculty and our staff who are phenomenal and for our children. But I just, I wanted to recognize you because I feel like you've been doing so much work and I don't even know if anyone knows how much work you've been doing. So I really want all of you to take a vacation.
A second, yeah, the third.
December.
We can't say enough. It is an incredible amount of work. And again, no, a very difficult decision and, and.
And it's the administration and the faculty and the staff, a lot of whom normally don't work summers, who have been working.
The dedication's unbelievable.
Yeah.
We're very, very, very strict like this. And so our appreciation is.
And now I think we should tell.
Okay, does anyone else, is there any further? I feel like there's really nothing else, from my perspective, nothing else to say. I mean, we've heard, we've heard everything and we all, I think we're, well, we're going to, we're going to vote, but I know there are more steps to be taken, but for now, we're voting on, on the model. So we have a, we have a motion, we have a second. I think we're done with discussion. So we're going to take a, a vote. I'm going to start with Charlie Donahue.
Yes.
Mia Plotkin.
Yes.
Amanda Phillips.
Yes.
Tony Mullin.
Yes.
And I am also a yes, it is unanimous. The motion carries and so we have, school committee has voted in favor of a hybrid model. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. The whistling, where's that coming from? It's amazing to think that in addition to all that goes on with COVID and trying to determine the model, that there are other, there are other responsibilities as well. Okay, and that includes approval of the June 11th, 2020 meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Oh.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion of those minutes? Seeing none, we're going to do again a roll call vote. Mia.
Yes.
Amanda.
Yes.
Tony.
Yay.
Charlie.
Yes.
And I am also a yes, it is unanimous. Those are the motion carries and those minutes from June 11th have been approved. Next action item, approval of the July 9th, 2020 meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Remove.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on these minutes? Seeing none, Charlie Donahue?
Yes.
Mia Plotkin?
Yes.
Amanda Phillips?
Yes.
Charlie, Tony Mullin?
Yes.
And I also approve of those minutes. So that is motion carried and the minutes from July 9th are approved. Approval of the July 20th, 2020 meeting minutes. Do I have a motion? Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion of these minutes? Seeing none. Seeing none, have a vote. Mia Plotkin?
Yes.
Amanda Phillips?
Yes.
Tony Mullin?
Yes.
Charlie Donahue?
Yes.
Earl Lewis, yes. And that motion carries, 20, uh, July 20th minutes are approved. Okay, approval of the superintendent as district representative to tech board of directors.
I just want to clarify, so historically, you have appointed me as your representative and assigned me voting power on behalf of Westwood at those meetings.
Right, that has been the tradition. Do I have a motion to approve?
Remove.
So move, Charlie, do I have a second? Okay, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Mia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Yes, and I say yes, so that motion carries unanimously. Okay, next one, approval of the school committee liaison assignment. So I, I provided you with the assignments and hopeful that they were okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Remove.
Second? Okay, any further discussion on these assignments? All right, Charlie, your vote?
Yes.
Mia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
And I am a yes, that motion carries. Moving on, this is a big one. This is a big important one and we're hopeful to, to celebrate this. This is a motion to approve, I'm looking forward to name, to rename the Little Theater as the Josephine Jowdy Theater.
I'll make a motion.
You have a mo, why I have a motion, do I have a second? Do we want to discuss this right now? I think we don't need to discuss this right now. So to vote, Mia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
And I also approve, I am a yes.
Carol, point of order, are we going to talk about the calendar?
Oh, did I miss the calendar? Oh, I did, I totally missed it.
So.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you. I, so I have a draft calendar, but I, I'm actually going to suggest that we table it because I think there's still a little more work to be done. But I think that the critical information that people would need tonight, the question I've been asked, getting asked is what's the first day of school for students? And in my presentation, I have suggested September 14th. So I would say if the committee has any objections to that, we should probably talk about it just so that people for planning purposes can put that on their calendar. To clarify, because the, the commissioner has reduced the number of required days, we can actually push the start date forward without pushing out the end date. So right now, on the draft calendar, June 18th is still the end date. The thing that might still be worked out is that it, it might still be possible to put two additional professional development days somewhere during the year. And so I, I want to think about that a little further and speak to the W T A. And I also want to think a little bit further now that we know what the cohorts would be and just look at the calendar again from that perspective.
And I assume Tuesday, the election day was going to be a day off, Wednesday would be remote. I just think about that Monday, maybe think about.
This is exactly the kind of thing that we've been, that we've been discussing. Yeah, exactly. So we may want to, you know, make a switch there or, or something like that. So I want to take a, a more careful look at that.
But the key date is the start date.
Yeah, and I'm assuming we're going to be needing another school committee meeting in August. Yeah, probably. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, all right, so we're going to table that for now, but thank you, Tony, for bringing that up. It's in the small print and. Okay, any new business? Is there anything that anyone wants to bring up? No?
No.
Charlie, you all set? No new business?
Thank you.
Okay, so do you know new business? I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Okay, I don't know if we need to discuss that. We're all okay. So Mia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Charlie? Yes, I see a yes. And yes, for me, okay, we are now adjourned. Thank you, everybody.